Me too.
And then I heard Trump.
He let him.
They should make you know this year.
Sherry, that off.
Yeah.
It's still streaming from Duval Con, not the.
Not on it.
I'll need to correct the live on face stuff you need on live on face.
Like million of your lives.
I just want to allow it to be destroyed.
I figured it out. Okay, so there's a drop down, there's two dropdowns where it's on the livestream that says. Can we start to go down?
Hold on. I'm still trying to.
He's trying to get together. The audio display.
You're here, sir.
Go like that.
It's up there, it's Peter, right?
Around the horn.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks for talking about that.
It's not so.
So we need to. That's correct, and we want to. Share your page. We then drop down here, okay, yeah, the third, and go to. Then you do one, perfect. There we go. Super good.
So thanks.
Thank you, or me. We're doing like council member and she did something about she hadn't used a different email to come in because she didn't, I don't know, it was something, but maybe she did.
I see her sent out the.
Okay, should you be able to promote her as a panelist? She said she tried to access it, like I said, you guys, I guess she can work with you offline, I know you're out. It was something like it wouldn't let her join because she's already a panelist or something.
Yeah, so all.
Yeah.
Do we want to push the agenda over there? And then. Video on, then let me share.
But I'm nervous, we don't want to mention that's fine.
You just know that is like when you know where to go and you can't. It went back to the. Ooh, that's.
I was, that's where my brain was, I'm like, I wonder what that is. Sherry, because obviously this is not. There we go. Hey. Are we good to go? Then, just want to make sure you guys are.
We're, we're live, yeah. I see. Council member, not, and Mr. Kenny back there, um.
Is there another?
There isn't.
That's just.
That's you.
Yes.
All right, great, thank you guys, because I know that's so easy, it's difficult to figure out technology and I appreciate you guys working that out, so I'll call the order, the committee, the whole meeting at five thirty nine. Uh, first off, the good of the order, any council members have anything for the good of the order?
Uh, just.
Councilor Shaker.
Uh, just what I want to be about, I said, uh, not everyone, but most, most of the folks in this room, uh, a summary of the economic development survey, which I think is the final summary by, by the way, it's been out there over a month. Now, we did get sixty six responses, so very good, uh, responsive, see what the people have made, uh, you know, made their priority, uh, as far as business owners are concerned. And lots of good vibe for discussion at a upcoming meeting, very useful for us to guide, you know, where we spend our, uh, economic development money.
All right, thank you, anything else for the go of the order? Okay, with that, we'll move on to review of regular meeting agenda. Uh, this is usually where we look at our consent agenda and see if there's anything we want to pull off for discussion. Or if we have any quick questions we can answer. Sorry, I think I'll just go ahead and say, I think I know we need to pull the facility and trespass policy off. Um, there were a few questions that, um, we wanted to follow up with and have a little more discussion about, so if that's fine with everyone. We can pull that from consent on the meeting, but if everything else looks okay, that was on consent, I'm not hearing anything. Okay. All right, so with that, then, we'll go ahead and go through our first discussion item, which is actually our introduction to mental health professional, which is about. Wherever you want to be.
Uh, good evening, council. That. Chief of law police, I'm here tonight to, uh, kind of discuss our mental health program and I guess we can talk through the paper introduction, as you were, uh, I might come over at the future, like a year and a half ago, I started the process. Various entities around the region to try to get us mental health services here in the city. Chief Lo from Redmond was kind enough to engage me in these conversations and over a period of time, several months, um, he agreed to, uh, give us an interlocal agreement with them to give us access to Suzie Pearl, who's one of the leading experts in this area, so. I'll let her come on up and talk about herself, um, and what she does and what she offers her city, but I'm happy to have her on board, and she's already, she's only been working with us since January first, but she's already made me, so it's amazing.
Good evening, everybody, like the chief said, my name is Suzie Pearl, on the life, I've been on all professional in the state of Washington, and my. I agree, I suppose the most important thing would be is that I've started co-response models and now set up police departments that have expanded out since their inception, and I've been doing this since late twenty fifteen, early twenty sixteen, so. Long before, this was a cry out that cities and communities wanted long before, it was even kind of conceptualized, the idea of putting a castor and a cop in the car together, uh, was when we started to forge this new road, so. My role in Redmond, as well as here in Duval, is to respond to crisis calls that have a behavioral health, social services, or a de-escalation component. And then I can supply in that moment some of those de-escalation and assessment skills, as well as the follow-up to any social services connections or repeat contacts they would, our fire departments, mobile integrated, or the police departments. And if the situation arises where there's a little bit more of a severe circumstance, the chief has seen, um, in a handful of cases where we've done crisis negotiations with some more higher level or higher QD situations where, say, a SWAT team or a higher, higher trained unit is coming out to respond to that crisis, so. You'll get the mental health background, but they respond to calls and doing that de-escalation work, and then you'll additionally get. Nothing's gonna go wrong, but in the event. Just go put that out there in the world, knock on some big wood or whatever, have fun. We have some extra capabilities to bring in higher level crisis initiation in this next one, and I figured I would just answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Uh, I see you supply your contact, like, very, yes, yeah, very expert, thank you for that. Uh, I guess between you and Chief, I want to understand, what is the escalation procedure to Suzie, in particular, uh, should she always come to the police department?
Yeah, we are able to receive it via nine one one call or, you know, someone reporting it, okay, to an officer, good, good.
There's, yeah, there's a call you'd like me to respond to, um, getting a dispatch is a way that will also not only be able to track the calls and provide data at the end of the year, but it's a standardized way, um, there is contact information there, I do have community members reach out to me and say. My sister, our old brother, whatever, is having a mental health issue, there's no emergency now, but can you point the two resources, I can answer a lot of those too, there's something to respond to, yeah, we'll go through.
And then as our officers are responding these calls, if they see any instance where, um, there's going to be foul report needed by Suzie, or is possibly she has some resources that are available to that family or whoever they're dealing with, they'll code their call and they close it out. As an MHP contacted, it'll go automatically, they're hers, and when she comes in, logs in, you know, in most cases it'll pop up, which shows that she's filed for her, and plus, uh, she has her own, uh, email address for the city's MHP at duvalwata.com. So, uh, people can contact her directly, they're looking for resources, or additional help, or certain things that she does.
Yep, and I'll be. Traditionally, or at least what we're thinking about is, uh, me being here Tuesdays from about eleven to three, and then I would be going back to Redmond, but we've also determined that if. There is something happening in Duval that requires some sort of mental health touch point, and there isn't something that I'm already stuck on in that city that I can find a way either to get here, um, and be able to respond to that if follow-up, you know, a day later would be too much, um, or too long in a gap. Or if there's an instance where it's an emergency, emergency, um, then we have a mutual aid agreement where an officer from Redmond and I should show up, so. We kind of tiered it out to see what the, the levels of, of contact and support would be, and then we're gonna meet them, and if we need to take her one, then we can.
Any questions? All right, well, thank you so much for. And Chief, was that all for me too?
That's it.
That was it, okay, thank you so much. All right, so that will move on to another introduction, which is our new city clerk with, uh, C A McNamara. Good evening, council, um, staff. And members of the public, if there are any, I would like to, um, introduce our new city clerk, John Guatero, uh, he started last Monday, uh, he's learning the ropes today at his first council meeting, and, um. Uh, unfortunately, it's also the first day that we have all of this new technology up and running, including the cords wired and everything today, so a perfect first day to jump into the fire. John, if you would like to introduce yourself a little bit more to, uh, council and the public.
Certainly, everyone, uh, my name is John Claro. I'm a city clerk, I. Just moved to Washington about a year ago, uh, I used to work with, uh, King County Superior Court, and before that, I worked with the Judicial Council of Georgia, administrative office of the courts. Where, um, I managed different policymaking groups, policymaking bodies, um, not only the administrative end of it, but also the policymaking end of it. Um, and I was there for about good six years, before then, um, I was in Connecticut where I worked for the people branch. Uh, for quite a few years there as well, and I am thrilled to be here in Washington and being with you all is amazing.
Great, everyone.
Awesome, well, thank you, and. Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, for you on a hands as we take down. All right, so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is concession policy, with our city attorney, Mr. Kenny. Yeah, sure.
All right, just getting a current point up.
I think we all got used to remote meetings, but hybrid is a different piece of having people online and in person.
Share.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty easy remote, or at least we learned, and we got it, and now I change them again, I'm seeing like every group I'm a part of go through this, or it's just really challenging.
I wonder, is that the functionality that I'll?
So that's why.
I wonder if we move on to the A R C report, and then let's have you email this to, um, to Sherry and John, and we can share from there.
Or one of us can do it if you guys have anything.
I'm having difficulty sharing, it won't allow me to be a panelist for some reason, so Dana is available to present for you.
I am logged in.
Should we just stick with this then?
She's.
Maybe internet issues, because I know we're connecting to the meeting.
Something's really slow right now, really slow. We're trying to get our service up ready, because that's like no. Service out of your house.
How many of us are logged in through our city?
Oh, you mean just connected to wifi? I am.
Yeah.
There, I can show off the wifi, I don't need to be on it.
I just need to.
Download the packets, I can.
We are working on that for you, and they were just a little off base on our, but. Even more, I, I email the chief, so somebody say, oh, no, I know.
So I'll start talking while you're looking at that, sweetie, you're going, so, um, I was asked, um, it's now been a few months, um, to work on a kind of, uh, initial proposal on how to move forward with a concession stand policy. Uh, there was some desire to learn what it would take to get a policy in place to utilize the concession stand, uh, to a greater degree, and so what I did is I worked on, um, kind of a bare bones, um. Summary of what it would take to get a policy, what things need to be in a policy, and what those things might look like, I talked to Steve, talking to Mayor Portem, and kind of built that out a bit, and so I want, what I wanted to do is present to this group. Those different sections so that we can get an idea of what would be in that policy and get feedback from the group on kind of where the consensus lies on the different elements of that. Um, things like scope of the allowed use, uh, how much can be used inside and outside of the structure, scheduling, timing, cleaning, access and security, et cetera. And so we'll go through each one of those. I don't think what we'll do tonight is have everybody provide all input on everything. I'll email this out to everybody afterwards and ask for your input, and where there's consensus, it will be built, we could certainly have some discussion, uh, not cut it in short, but anyways, but, um, uh, you'll have to think about, right, this is your first opportunity. Um, so my sitting here doing this. Okay, so. Uh, okay, so, uh, the first slide was just a summary of all the different things that I just said, so the scope of the allowed use. So the idea here is to understand what should the concession stand be used for, obviously, it could be anywhere from hot dog stand to just selling candy bars. And I think the idea in the conversations was to have it be packaged food, no prepared food, when we get later into the discussion, we'll be talking about things like clean, um, and oversight of staff and staff time would be involved with it. And eliminating prepared foods is going to help reduce the impact on staff and cleaning. And, uh, also the sale of goods, local goods, if there's, you know, a sports event that weekend or something like that, and they have team hats or something like that. Um, and so. Does anybody have any thoughts on the scope of the use of the concession standard? And by all means, email afterwards as well, provide your, your thoughts.
I don't know if you, if that's, uh, what I'm about to say is covered in what you're talking about or if it's later, but what about also limiting it to organizations versus businesses, is that somewhere later?
We do get to that, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And so, all again, to that point, these are all kind of built on each other, so we'll just continue to go through, if you've got comments or thoughts, please do chime in, and council member and I don't think I can see, like, your hand or anything like that, so feel free to come off mute if you have any comments as we go along. Uh, if you want to go back or whatever.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, so for physical location, this is just intended to, is this just gonna be inside the stand, or is there gonna be an ability to set up a table outside of the stand? Um, so there's some utility to having a, a table outside with a setup on it, uh, we certainly don't want that to creep, um, whether that's gonna be a single folding table, maybe have a painted box on the ground that they can operate within, or something like that. Um, now, naturally, this is gonna be very hard to inspect and to enforce, we're not gonna have staff, uh, at that location the entire time, so, um, if we do go outside of the structure, that could be a little bit harder. Um, you know, Steve can get into the details of when workers are available, um, and how oversight could be done, but in terms of physical location inside the structure or some limited allowance inside of the structure. So then for scheduling, um, I think the, the kind of the consensus on scheduling was that the renter of the field would have the first opportunity to check a box and to also rent the concessions. And then, if they chose not to do that, that they would then have the, or the concession stand would then be open to the rest of the public. To book it, that means that somebody would book the concession stand if the team or the, the field booking parties don't book it, to then sell stuff. Um, and so, and we'll get to your question here in just a second, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they would be directly related to each other, um, we could do a limitation for nonprofits. I would recommend that we re-explore the, uh, the nonprofit definition that the city has used, that has caused some confusion in the recent past. Um, and so we can go in that direction with that. And, and just again, I think staff is not to have, you know. Staff, uh, staff available to check and inspect, um, the bookings, given the hours.
Um, so thinking about that nonprofit definition, um, those prior discussions, presumably in the context of facility rentals as well, when we think about how we define nonprofits for the purposes of renting, whether concessions stand or.
What, uh, why does it matter whether it's profit or not, not for profit?
Uh. That could be a decision for council, if it was a decision, or it was a conversation previously, and now it's been so long since that conversation, I can't recall exactly what it was about, but it was probably related to discounts. And whether or not.
Oh, so you give a discount.
Yeah, uh, and I, I could be misremembering exactly, it's been.
I could blend what, I mean, my concern with that and why I'd like to have that discussion with council about nonprofits or organizations and definition versus like a businesses, I don't know who the business, I wouldn't. Want this concession to be used for the purpose of, oh, I can rent it out for cheap and sell my stuff there, because, you know, something like that, so, do we, you know, when do you get into the territory of like food trucks and the commercial businesses that might come in and try and dominate that when. The intention really was there's some local P T S As and little leagues and things like that that use it as a fundraiser, and so, um, yeah, I don't know, that, that's just the kind of, kind of where that came from, but definitely it would be good to have council talk that through.
So one other question on my topic of scheduling, was there any consideration given to a repeat rental or repeat, you know, in terms of, uh, particularly if a field runner isn't interested in sort of moves to the broader pool? You know, much like the, the dialogue in here, if you rented it, you know, it's profits is given to someone else, it, it may be an issue, um, because ultimately. If it's available and you only have a single person interested, it's an issue, but if you have competing parties and someone has rented previously, if there was any, uh, if we want to give any consideration for that.
Yeah, I thought, we did talk about that, and I can't remember, I thought I had put it in here, and I'm realizing I sent you a different version of it, it just broke it out and not in the slides. Same information, but yes, that can absolutely be done, but to make sure, and I, I can't remember if it was our conversation or, but I thought it was something along the lines of, you know, you can't have X number on the books at any one time. Um, now, the fields do get booked out in advance, and I know that that's gonna be, uh, another topic as well, but if they get booked out in advance and the first option goes to the field renter, they would potentially have more at any one time.
That makes sense.
Um, okay, so let's, let's keep going here, and so, um. And go to the, sorry, thank you. I apologize, I broke these out into different slides for, uh, to see it easier, but, um. So, okay, well, I guess this is the one we were getting, kind of getting at that point, is that they're booked by the season, and so we want to probably match a timeline, uh, to, to, to go with that, and then if they're not booked with the field, then somebody else could come in and book it. Um, but again, you know, uh. I could foresee somebody booking the field and having their thing go on that day, and then have another entity there as well, you know, selling things, and people would just need to know that that's possible, because they don't have this exclusive use of that. Um, thinking, I think, is a really big one to keep in mind, um, you know, how, how would this happen, you know, are you gonna require a deposit, but if you do require a deposit. What, what happens even if you have a deposit? Do you hire somebody to go out there and check after every single rental, see and do cleaning if necessary, does staff do that? Um, so practically speaking, how does a facility like this stay clean, and how does the city maintain oversight over the facility, given the hours and usage type for the facility? Uh, so this is one of the larger areas of staff involvement, potentially, and so if anybody has any thoughts on how to manage it so that it stays clean, again, one thing would be the type of use to make sure that if it is dirty, it's dirty with. Trash and not, you know. Ketchup and mustard and, you know, chili or something like that. And so that's. And again, I thi- I think, maybe this is just my own extrapolation, but I think one of the main things about policy is, how much time and effort is it gonna take for staff to make the reservations, manage reservations, keep it clean? Get into the next one access, get somebody key, jet key back in, rekey it if it needs to be rekeyed because it got lost, uh, manage, you know, the graffiti and keeping people out of it and things like that. Um, so for access and security, so how will we do that in an effective way? I think the easiest solution is the one that's not available right now, and that's the wifi, have an electronic keypad, so do you do a lockbox, um, that you have a code for, do you do a key, um, from sitting in the hall, the deposit for a lost key? Um, again, all of that is, is a staff time, you know, component, and so how, how can we make this an accessible, uh, location without having it just open and unlock, unlocked at all times, which would lead to people using it in ways that you don't want it to.
That was, it's more of a question to Director Ben Shewski, I know, you know, in terms of, and it may be a case of the cost outweighs the benefit, but something like that, the program will park keys where you wouldn't require. Uh, wifi to program the key, if for a fixed period of time it stops working at this kind of way, you know, that a lot of expenses, so might be some.
I know there's also ones where you can drive by with a unit, you can alter it with that without having wifi. Okay, um, so for the rental fee, um, you know, the question would be, how do you break it out, you know, do you, do you require it to be an all-day flat fee, you try to do it by the hour? Um, there are some comps that, uh, Director Nishewski provided, you know, these are pretty modest flat fees for the use of, of those facilities. Um, and so we would want to make sure that we adopt at the same time as this, and the fee stipulations that would cover the use. Um, this fee would likely just be, you know, kind of a processing fee for the application, it would not include a potential cleaning deposit, a potential key deposit, and things like that, that's not built into that. And so it would be more than that, again, that's something that the city would need to collect and process. Um, one thing that we'll talk about at the end is the potential for, um, additional policies that could go along with this, related to, uh, rent releases, rainouts, cancellations, no-shows, what do you do when somebody has, you know, gone, you know. So far as to pay the fee, you know, get involved, saying that conversation is much looking for the fields, but I think it would apply to this as well, um, so if they can't have their events, do we then process everything in reverse and give them, you know, uh, their costs back? Um, if there are no-shows, what do we do, so there's a lot built into that as well. And then in terms of duration of policy, you know, this is, um, a policy that is new, we haven't really figured it out yet, we'll do as much as. We'll do as much as we can through this process when we get it created. Um, you could do it as an interim policy and use that six months or a year with a, uh, a plan to learn a little bit about how to be used over the summer. You could also just put it in with, uh, a check-in. You just have staff checking on the policy, report back to council on how it's going. Um, and I think the idea, um, that we talked about would be to start smaller and see how it goes and can build from there. Um, the more you build into it at the very beginning, I think it's going to be harder for staff to build the program. So I think that that's one, one consideration. And then I think, oh man, yeah, there's that. So in terms of the process, this is a process that's just kind of your, your average process for, for things like this, policies like this. Um, so we'll get consensus from council, you know, we'll go out and get some similar codes, gather language, draft, uh, a policy addressing the items that we've discussed. And then, you know, using the input that you provide, um, staff will review that and provide input. Um, and then I'll revise it again and, um, bring that to council, uh, account. And then we'll revise it again based on the input and then we'll present it to the final touch. And so, you know, there, there's a bit of a, a dance whenever there's a policy like this, um, to make sure that whoever's drafting it and touches in with the users, you know, the staff, the council, uh, to make sure that we're taking everything into account. Then we'll have two touches before council.
Councilmember Nethan?
Let's see, can you see me? So, um, I love this policy. I'm so excited. We're starting to work on it. And one thing I, I'm hearing a lot of concerns around cleaning and getting keys back and forth and, and some of these other, um, issues that would take time and I hadn't really considered them only because I, I think that this concession stand will really attract either a repeat user, you know, a group that wants to come in and, you know, uh, frequently do it. Um, just because it's a lot of work to get up a concession stand, you know, you have to buy the supplies and, you know, it's a lot of work. So I can't imagine it's just going to be this one-off all the time where all these random people are renting it and you have to train them and follow up to make sure they clean it. Um, because if you get a repeat user, if they aren't keeping it clean, you can say, hey, we're not going to let you rent it anymore if it's not clean. And there could be, you know, I, I just, I have a hard time believing, um, that in general, the type of renters we will get. Um, I'm hoping that won't become a problem. The other type of renter I could see wanting to use the concession stand would be if we got a tournament for the weekend, you know, so they might want to rent it for three days, run it for three days. And in that case, it's not a lot of this getting a key back and forth for every hour we rent the field. Um, it would be more either a repeat user or someone who really wants a big block. Um, so I don't know if we could restrict the policy to start in that way, um, to get that, to make sure it's that type of user, um, so we don't get this, uh, time consuming handing out of keys and lockboxes and all this other stuff. Um, I'm curious how everyone else feels about that, but I do agree, um, with having it open to, to nonprofits because really I, I consider this a mutually benefit, a mutual benefit to the, the city. Um, the people who go to the fields to practice his games, it's super fun to have the concession stand open. And having people willing to run the concession stand and they get, you know, um, some money for their nonprofit. Anyway, I just think of it as a win-win and I, I, that is how I envisioned the concession stand being used.
Thank you, um, Director Van Shesky.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Van Shesky, Public Works. So a couple of things to that we will, so like a policy like that can be interim. First step is a tenant of the concession must be coincident with renting a field. Pretty easy for it.
And then in one, whether, you know, stick with that or not, that line of limit comes in to start, right?
Um, I think some things to add to the work programming. Kind of incidentally, but I think let's say blocks of time. I think we need some, some fees and the policy set where if you're going to venue for the tournament and you want to have the block, you're probably not going to want to pay the hourly rate for each day of your tournament. You're going to want something lesser. But yet more than a daily rate. So we have to have a understanding of developing some new fees, right? So that's part of that too. And I think we don't have it yet. We, we need to include some, again, I'm not going to dump a bunch of stuff in this one policy, but other things that come into this are going to be the tournament. We don't have a fee for a tournament. So right now they rent the fields. It's a lot because you're, you're taking a lot of hours, but does it need to be that much kind of thing? So I think it's something to consider. Because there is a benefit, we talked about, hey, you're bringing an event and then that brings things and people to town who I think I heard plenty of it. I've never seen this part before. It's amazing. The kids can run around, they get ballfields here, you know, it's, it's something we've never, we never knew people had. So there's that ancillary economic development kind of benefit to it. So I think someone to consider those costs. And that walks in that group. Uh, right now, everybody is working really well, like, hey, we want to do a tournament. Here's our block of time. How our rental works now is people call and they reserve it. So if it's January and then we'll do something in June that can do that. And I, I think we need the, some agencies which are looking to have. So it's December one, we're taking field reservations for January one for the first quarter of the next year, right? January one through March thirty-one, for every day of the fresh. I've never talked that thing, so I don't know. Um, so yeah, you, I think we would like some of that control so it's not, we didn't think about something six months back when somebody else was and somebody else looked at the field nine months ahead because they were thinking of their things, right? So it can get a little cumbersome and we don't want to limit what's going on, but sometimes we may sign somebody up that asks for something, you know, nine months ahead. When that season hasn't started and that group hasn't asked for the space yet. So I think in my opinion, that needs to be driven by policy and, uh, Steve is the director of status. I don't need that kind of headache, neither do you guys. We need a policy that guides that. And it's all in its infancy, which is great. We are getting a ton of renters up there and everything is going well. No one's arguing. Um, we make mistakes. We call people, we try to correct them. But nobody's perfect, so it's important to help create that, uh, perfection, so to speak. Uh, then we ought to understand to the building itself, right? It has a door into a concession. Inside the concession is a door into the chase that controls all of the utility components of the structure that feed out to the restroom. So, you know, I can bring a, a diagram up, go where it goes on there, what needs to be locked. But we store supplies for restroom up there, right? Garbage bags or garbage cans, restroom supplies, clean supplies are stored in the concession area. So we will have some ancillary costs. Do we want to put up cabinet in that locks for city stuff? We want to change the lock set in the chase, store things. But you would imagine the chase is no wider than I think three-ish feet with piping running in there. So it's not a great place to store things, um, from that perspective. So there's a lot of things to consider. As we move forward, just know we'll bring forward, you know, what is, isn't working. Interim, you know, interim policy, monthly, full month check-in. Some seasons are weirder than others. Um, things are going to be different April through October as they are going to be November through March. Right? We have four-ten staff who work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, April through October. Weekends, no problem. Someone pull it around off season, right? We don't have staff covering weekends yet. Now we're going to ask that, so maybe that's something we, we worked out op- operationally, um. But lots of things to think about. Uh, the other thing to think about too. I talked to Vice Director Mason on this, credit cards. Currently, we don't have credit cards rate, credit card rates baked into the map for field rentals. Right? We did our comps. That's one thing. But the city using credit cards, you know, eats two point seven five percent or two point seven percent to process, you know, credit transaction. We can either A, increase our fees by that, or B, wrap it into it, or C, ignore it and eat it. There's, you know, there's many things to do on it, but we need to know what we want to do on it because we are getting asked. Can we use a credit card? They said, sure. Um, but currently you would have to then pay the pandemic fee. Um, for your utility bill, right? You can pay with your credit card, but that amount is baked into the map of how the rates affect. And then what you pay is stretched because those credit card assumptions are into the mathematical model on, on rates. So again, things to just, uh, build on and think about, um, I think.
Ad- advertising and signs.
Uh, while we're talking about doing it all, why don't we just finish it? Uh, advertising and signs, the leagues are asking, you know, for their fundraising and marketing abilities. They sell ad space, whether it's on their website, their T-shirts, right, their uniforms, but they look like banners. You don't have a banner policy, right?
I'm not far apart.
Yeah, so again, we want to entertain that. It helps offset their costs. I, I think it can be made, you know, certainly productively and in a tidy way, but again, policy. So things to bring forward. Uh, I think side effects of how much concession gets rented. I will be curious in an operational component on trash pickup and if people are or aren't throwing their trash away. So that'll be interesting to see if they're selling, you know, Kit Kats and Kit Kat wrappers auto-placed. We're going to get pretty irritated. So that's kind of those things that come out. You don't want to see the osprey making its nest out of cardboard wrappers, so. Lots of stuff to consider, but all good stuff. And operationally, we just want some policy to help. I can say to A, B, and C user, like, hey, here's what we got. Enjoy it. But I think the ability to keep people out who aren't behaving well is important to have in policy, so.
The council comments or questions? Uh, Councilmember Shaker?
Well, I, I like Steve's suggestion as far as keeping it simple to begin with. Uh, you know, limit the scope to whatever, maybe only the folks that, that rent the field. Uh, explore what happens, the, how much staff time they're spending, you know, what, what problems they run into. Uh, you know, whatever, because, uh, uh, that'll be very helpful, I think, in us. And then as time goes on, assuming we decide to expand the scope. Um, and the work our way, you know, work our way up, uh, up through.
Yeah, I, I'll just, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think time blocking that you have suggested was, uh, really, it's really smart, uh, because if someone is forced to like, look at an Excel spreadsheet, block out three hours and then they're allocated for those three hours, that's way e- that's way harder to back out though, just mentally than an hour. Oh, it's an hour, I missed it. You know what I mean? It just becomes a little bit more of a commitment. The intentionality is there in more of a real and the chip way. I think it forces like, it forces a little more accountability on the end of the renter. The other thing I think is interesting, I, I may apologize if I missed this, but there's also an element here which would kind of go against maybe if they're using the field and they can't actually rent the thing. But I keep thinking about like Boy Scouts, high schools, the cheer squad, you know, the basketball team. I imagine those things, fundraisers for them, they roll in there, they roll with their two coolers in their, you know, their Costco wagon. And you know, when they're out of candy bars, they're out of candy bars. And that'd also be curious. I mean, so I think that's something that we should keep in mind because that's like an immediate plug into the community, um, both into the schools and also into like the ancillary groups. And then the, the last, I think, thing I would throw on the, uh, the table is, um, there's, there's dumpsters, I would imagine, lock dumpsters up there. So I would somewhere have a rental policy. Say like, if you, you know, you keep a list of who rents it, so if we come here and then you have, there's trash everywhere and your trash isn't cleared. Like, we don't have to actually grant you access again. So we have a running list of, we have a running list of like basically behavioral habits with those vendors. So time block, take that list down, free up your time. And then the, you know, knowing who the offenders, maybe they'll be none, but knowing who they are would save city time as well, I would imagine.
Great. Um, I'll jump in really quick and then I'll see if you two, um, have anything and we're getting, oh, we still have a little bit of time. Um, so you know, this originally came through a council chat and it was a local PTSA that brought it up. So for that reason, I would, uh, it would make me cringe a bit to limit it just to people renting the field because they're not renting the field. They just want to step in and provide, you know, the middle school and the high school PTSA's already run student stores. So they're like ready to step into whatever space and do that. Um, so you know, I, I feel like, you know, it's not like we're openly advertising this. So when the policy is set at some point in time and it's, you know, maybe put on Facebook or something, I just, I could be wrong. I don't feel like we'll get a huge flood of people, especially if you really limit it to, I agree, all packaged stuff. I mean, going down the list, anything, what's the easiest? What's the easiest for right now? Just keep it really small. I would even say just do a daily rate. And because I'm thinking of who's cleaning, who's picking up in between users on the same day, just to start. Um, and that might limit it for some people. Either keep the fee lower to make it affordable or you make it higher and you need to pay it or you don't. And so that those things could also limit who does it. I think the idea of, um, you know, painting, uh, a box or something in front is maybe one of the easiest ways to distract people, like you can utilize a space because I imagine when it's raining, people are going to want to, that'll be the next question. Can we put a pop-up tent right in front of the concession stand? Doing a table, I know one group who'd used it, their feedback was that window is super tiny and awkward. So I just thought.
Possible cost increases.
Cause I think that was one of my main things that I brought up when we met, um, when people might want to just have a cooler out front or a, you know, table to help because it's a little bit of an awkward setup. So, um, anyways, I think, I don't know if in the future, what is going to happen with scheduling. Um, if we're going to get a better system to do that, and so then it would be easy for concessions to kind of just flow right into that, um. So those are some of my initial ideas, just whatever keeps it simple, easy. Um, I, I'm not always a huge fan of interim policies. I would rather make that part a check-in. And it's only because in the past, I feel like it's like, oh, we gotta bring this to council and prove again, because it's going to expire. But you had mentioned something when we met about you can limit how far out you can even book, but I know that's tricky because fields run out. So I'm trying to think like if people are allowed to book out fields. Um, anyways, that's something we could try and figure out offline, but I was just thinking if people are able to book way far ahead of time for fields, they have first dibs on concessions. That doesn't mean we need to open concession booking, you know, that far out. Maybe it's only opened a couple of months. But again, there's always got to be a staff person managing that and unless we have software to do that. So anyways, those are my thoughts. Um, see you later then.
Um, there, you know, logistical issues will certainly arise and we'll want the policy to cover that as well. I mean, I think about this building and we've had it open for a day and we've already had issues with use of this building. Things like storing, you know, are we going to allow these groups to store their stuff there? They're going to ask, um, so trying to, even if it makes the policy a little cumbersome, even if we have an appendix on the back that says, here's what this doesn't do. Can't store it, you can't store your tent there. You can use the box that's painted. Um, and think about how we can anticipate as many things as possible before we watch it. Because inevitably you'll have the question of, well, you didn't tell me, I couldn't do that, so I did it. Which is what we've already discovered about opening this building.
So we need a list of no's. And even if it's a lot of no's. Even if it's a long list of no's, we can always add in some yeses years down the road.
The policy is a big yes.
Yeah.
That makes maybe some no's.
Yes, that's fine. Um, we'll go Councilmember Supple.
I assume there's a policy for renting the field without?
Not a good one.
Not a good one? So is this going to be a, the concession policies are going to be part of the field rental policy or is that a standalone one or?
I mean, starting that field now, I would love to spend time cleaning up all of our rental policies on this property if we can. So going to not opposition, I think staff willing to do it because it is problematic to manage a site that isn't, you know, clearly spelled out what should or shouldn't happen. Cause then, you know, I, I get looked as weak favorites. Or why'd you give it to them and not me? Or you gave it to them for an hour, but we usually had the block and all this other stuff, like, I don't need that kind of thing. So, and I know there are softwares out there, but all softwares have to have approval input on the administration side of those things. So. And then that can be even worse when we talk to those folks because like, oh, they rejected my thing and then you get a phone call. Why'd you reject my thing? And, you know, so, yeah, fields and rentals are super fun as, uh, Cynthia's already come to their stand. Building one day.
Someone is renting a field, um, would they have the option of renting the concession stand or the two separate ways into the?
I think that would be the way to go to start. Like I said, um, the only, again, piece of policy is we have three fields. Sometimes we have three renters, right? You could have a cross going on the big field. Woodley on the, in, in the middle field and field three, the grass field, you could have fast bitch over there from a sleight club. So you could have three completely separate people all at the exact same time, who gets the stand? Is that a random allocation? Cause you. Is that a random allocation, cause you know, we're not, the state, we can't hold a lottery, like, what, what else can we do? Random generator, like, ooh, we can do, there are tools, right, I mean, but we need some guidance. Cause something will come up, and the food thing, no storing food in the structure.
Yeah.
No storing food in each tenant's permanent temporary structure on premise, cause. The big users, soccer, football and Little League, they also have a, like a Conex box on premise. I don't need raccoons and other things trying to get in the Conex boxes. You know, on our site, drawing, you know, more stuff and, and things in, not we don't garbage bins already, but. More food you bring, the more things you will bring, so that issue can go.
Councilmember, oh, did you have something else?
Yeah, mine was actually sort of directed as a follow-up to. A city minister, he had around, um, you know, I found when we did the sign policy. One of the, the sort of artifacts that came out of that was the policy and then. A more consumable form of that policy for, for folks who wanted to register, I, I would just have a suggestion that we may want, rather than a appendix or. Still have all that stuff in policy, have a consumable F A Q. Uh, where, you know, it's more a questioning to format, but we're gonna take for the field rental as well as for the concession rental. Because I think that's where folks tend to scan and find answers to their questions.
So I'll, I'll just quickly chime in here, so I think what we've come to in this discussion is the reason why. The project didn't immediately move forward and I was asked to put together a scope to then come back to you, to make sure you're on board. Is that there's credit card processing fees, there's the fee schedule update, there's the field bookings, there's the advertising and signs, the sign policy. There's the field policy, there's a lot that can and should be done with this, and so that's, that's timing. Uh, for staff, and so I think the reason that this, um, didn't immediately move forward. And I was asked to put this together is to make sure that everybody understands the scope of this project. You know, Steve's got a laundry list, right? And all of that is directly related to this, you spread out more, a guide after, that's something that needs to be made. And so I think we wanna make sure, I, I'd like to make sure that we've got consensus in council to move forward. With what could be, you know, a laundry list, there's a lot of things on staff's plate. And I think that's why a degree in light wasn't immediately given, if I misremember that one, you know, but that's, that was kind of when I was told on why I. Took this project in this initial first small touch. And so I just wanna make sure that we're on board, there's, there's a fair amount that needs to be done with the fields and with, um. Uh, what's on there?
Yeah, Councilmember Nappleton.
Yeah, I, I hear that there were a lot of extra things brought up, but I don't know that any of those things, um, need to be done. Before we create a concession policy and start renting it. I, I think that they're just a laundry list of things that would make the renting of everything go more smoothly. Um, but does, you know, creating a concession policy and allowing that space to be rented out. Suddenly make us have to, you know, solve the credit card processing thing, which is an existing problem or question. That touches lots of other things, um, so I guess I'm just trying to understand if you're saying. That if we say yes, that all of those other things that got brought up, prioritization of this and of field rentals and. Is all being rolled into what we're now asking to be done? Because I still feel like what we're asking is a very simple concession policy, let's let it start being rented. And I, I think that the most likely user group is either gonna be a tournament or a P T S A. Or a nonprofit associated one with one of these sports groups, like, I, I think. The reality is at the beginning, the scope is gonna be very small, so I'm trying to understand. If all of these peripheral questions that are loosely related to this, but not dependent. I'm not saying yes, I think those need to be done, but are we saying we aren't gonna bring forward a concession policy until we can do all those other things too?
So I think that, that's, that's a council decision, um. What, what I, I think there are some that can trail, but you're gonna need to update the fee schedule for fees for the stand. So you can take care of the, uh, the credit card fee and in that process. If you're going to book at the same time as the fields are booking. And you wanna do a quarter, one man, one month in advance of a quarterly booking for the fields, you do those two together. Because you, you, those, you want those to, I think, it sounds like, well, have those walk in tandem at the beginning. And so, no, I, I mean, absolutely not, you don't need to, you know, polish your coat up in every regard, uh, before you do this. And I think there is consensus to have a straightforward usable policy, so, uh, I think we do need to address. What we think and know will come up, but, um, it, it doesn't need to be bloated, it doesn't need to solve everything. But in, in the things that we are doing, there are a couple other things that I think we could address. Those two being, you know, the two that I'm thinking of, uh, straight away, um, and then the guide, the guide sheet, I think that's a. Hugely useful tool for people to have, you can give it out at the soccer sign-ups to everybody that's involved, whatever, that can absolutely trail me. And that, that's not a policy dependent thing, um, and so, so, yeah, so. I, I think it'll evolve, absolutely, and, um, I think we can check those boxes as we're going through and checking boxes that we're already doing.
Yeah, I think when I brought this forward, when I heard from community members of the council chat, I, my intention was hopefully by spring, summer. Sports, you know, that someone could be out there selling bottles of water and goldfish crackers and, and back, you know, like, su- super simple. Um, and honestly, even if it meant not opening the concession stand, but they're allowed to set up a table right in front, you know. If that made it doable in the interim, like in the short term. I think, you know, just making sure there's the bare bones, basic ability for people to use it, cause we've had that concession stand and it hasn't been able to be used. And then it was used for that, uh, Little League tournament and everyone saw it get used and they were super excited about it, um, so, yeah, whatever we can do to. In my mind, that's my opinion, to get something going soon. And I understand the bigger scope of this all, and I think that's amazing, and we should pursue that in the long term, but I'm just talking super short term. What could we do now for relatively low impact to staff and everybody and enable the community to provide this additional amenity at a park? That, you know, a parent who frigging water or a snack for their kid doesn't have to go all the way back home and, oh, there's concession open. Anyways, that was my intention of bringing it forward. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Love it, and then Sheper.
I just said, I think that there's a, an argument, um, to Councilmember Nappleton's point, I think there's an argument to untavaged him. Um, in terms of like tying the field rental to the concession rental, I don't know if that, that on some level doesn't hamstring us. I mean, one seems like way more straightforward, the other one seems like you got multiple leagues competing once in advance to try to get field time, that's like one problem. Just opening this up to where there's, you know, a place where they can come in and rent it. And like, you know, how many people are gonna be interested, how many are gonna see it, it becomes like this swell of thing, you know, oh my gosh, we can come back down, but. I don't know that, we need, I think tying them together may actually be. Or in some way.
Councilmember Shaker.
Uh, let's see, the question, I guess, for Daniel, I, I think what you're asking for Daniel is, is just kind of a nod, council to go ahead with this. Is that really what, what, what we're looking for?
I mean, that, that's the initial thing, I, I love your input after this meeting on what we've talked about. Uh, Steve's sending an email, I mean, maybe Cynthia, Steve, myself, I, I mean, if that, if that would work and then we can kind of compile that. I, I, that, that makes it a little harder to find a consensus, but I think it'll happen, um, I can also provide a summary of the comments received. So council can see where things are at, if you wanna put a second on something or something like that, you can do it, um. I won't be adding to the policy, a single person's, you know, random thought. Uh, but if there's consensus around it, I mean, we all know kind of what the core elements of the policy are, so try to speak to those, that'll be useful as we create it. Uh, and then as well, we're, we're gonna go out and find some, you know, some policies from other jurisdictions, so, you know, we're, we're gonna, we started.
Good, yeah, so Amy, if you're ready to.
Yeah, I mean, we're not voting, but is there anyone against, you know, moving forward and pursuing this further? No? Okay, so then I guess we'll look for your email and then respond to it with some ideas or thoughts and concerns. Okay, thank you so much. Thanks, everybody, alright, so next item is A R C draft with, uh, see you later then.
Uh, so this is gonna be a very short update, um, but we can, uh, talk a little bit about it and next steps. So, um, Councilmember Nappleton, everybody was given a binder today, uh, with the initial. Uh, well, so the front of it is a memo from Director Lunscheski. Um, and our project manager on a project update with a project update, update flowchart. I believe this was in your packet, what follows in the binder is the initial draft from A R C. Of what we got Director Lunscheski this morning, I believe. Lit last night. Um, so this is by way of explanation and update, the very first touch. Of the document they're providing us, it is by no means final draft, and in fact, when you take a look at it. Um, there are areas where A R C has identified, um, if you take a look at page three. Um, you see the table of contents, it goes, the executive summary, um, or, uh. Roman numeral three. No, number three, um. Uh, so the table of contents has the executive summary, facility condition assessments. Which is, um, included here, but then you see C, D, E. More coming soon, so this is by no means a complete report. And then you have planning level options in subpart F. Um, that is, um, now, I, I, I basically got a turn, so I wasn't here at the beginning of this project. I believe in F is where you're gonna find a lot of the new information that was put together, um, between when you first. Saw some of the facility condition reports and, um, now, I think the facility condition or assessments have also been updated to some degree. And then you have appendices, um, that are included in this report. Um, the next steps of this project, again, you see, um, Director Lunscheski's provided a flowchart. On the twenty first, A R C's coming to present to council. Um, and hopefully we'll have maybe an updated draft at that time or more information to supplement what you have in the binders. Um, from the city council perspective, we need to discuss whether or not. We schedule a special meeting just to cover this report and what's in it. Um, and then we also need to talk about a community and stakeholder, um, kind of listening. Approach to what is in the report and the recommendations that come out of the report. Um, Director Lunscheski, anything else you would add?
Yeah, I think some of the remaining items within chapters that's forthcoming isn't necessarily missing for the sake of missing. It's missing because of conversation needs to be had before they really wanna craft their recommendation, right? Here's some things, no matter what the topic, digest it, you know, and then be able to provide something that is tenable. Um, in many chapters of the documents, of N O A through F, I believe there's, there's that to have. Um, visiting wise, I will send out the PDF. It came in like this two-page side by side, it was not a, it looks great as a PDF, it does not. Function well as a printable document, so it's a copy of a copy, and you can kind of see some of the graphics aren't great. So that was said, we know, of course, halfway through the printer decided to quit working and I'm like, oh, did we call the printer? And we're going to write tea, so that was fun, uh, yeah, it's moving, uh, the other little bit of, uh, it's called a long shell. Uh, Cynthia and I will be out of town at the next meeting, so. Uh, Marissa will be here, she's on schedule, whether she's worked for, uh, I may hop in, uh, virtually. From another land, but, uh, we will have a consultant here to start to share thoughts and move the process along. To come to finalization at some point in the very, as near future, uh, practice, so. Some of the pictures are so old, uh, you can see I M B as a city hall, which has been painted as of last summer, so, that is an old picture. Not that it's funny for the sake of being funny, but.
Um, I don't know if now we wanna think about scheduling that special session. In anticipation for after A R C coming on the twenty first, um, with the hope that. Uh, council gets, you know, information from A R C and some questions answered. But then to, I think from A R C's perspective, and what Director Lunscheski was saying. A R C is going to rely on council to give them information back so they can fill in chapters C, D and E. And so we need to build a process that we can kind of think about the, the data that's in the report. And then give back to A R C some direction on finalizing this project. So when A R C comes to the next meeting, it's mostly to inform this? Or is that the meeting that they won't be back on? Or a little bit of?
I think it's gonna be a little bit, certainly introduction, see what's going on, where we are, what those next pieces are. I don't think you're gonna be able to bite off all of the missing pieces, but we'll, we'll start it. Uh, I'm, I would probably suggest, like, A R C knows the general meeting schedule. If we want them to try to make a meeting, any date now probably lies to get and a couple of options, if we wanna post a separate meeting. Um, that's my two cents.
Do you feel like we, if we book, uh, um, schedule another meeting just to discuss this? Are you feeling like we would need A R C there, or it would be hard for council and, you know, all of us to talk about it?
I think they would be there.
What was that?
I think they would have to be there, at least on virtually, they would have to come.
Oh, yeah.
To introduce it, they'll be here and, and share, but I think those kind of things.
Yeah, I mean, my inclination would be that you would want both, so they come, they give an initial presentation. I can't imagine that you would get all of the answers to the questions that you might have done on the twenty third. So another session to have them in and then spend time after presentation delivering. Uh, as a council on anything you heard either the twenty first or when they answer questions again. Cause you'll wanna have, I think, space and time to react to, um, what's in the report.
Does council feel that we want, you know, in addition to them coming to the next meeting, to also have a separate meeting like we had originally talked about? To go more in depth?
Yes.
Head non-serby.
No, I mean, this, this is, we're really setting the stage for the future of our facilities here in Duval. It's super, super important and, uh, we need to give it, we need to give it a proper time and consideration. And I also think we do need A R C at these, uh, at these discussions as well, I mean, we might come up with some, you know, with the, uh. Project possibilities that they, uh, example, we might come up with a combination of those or something, you know, so we need them to understand that.
So did you wanna look at or draw updates now or general timeframes or what were you needing from us then?
Um, so what I think would be helpful is. Uh, kind of like how we, how, uh, council provided a time block in February for the retreat. If I can get some form of time block in March or that is off schedule. Or willingness to have two meetings in a week in March. Um, just some general ideas so we can work with A R C and getting a meeting scheduled.
Should we do like a Google poll that we think offline or did you want?
I can say that we do the poll, that.
Would that work better for people or unless, I don't know, how well people know their counters? In general, though, I, I know for a retreat, we kind of zoned in on weekends, but that would be probably challenging for a consultant? Or do you think that's on the table with them? I was also thinking like weeknights and you could do multiple meetings if we don't wanna, you know, have a five-hour meeting or something, but hopefully it wouldn't be that long, but.
I'm gonna, I would guess, once we kind of get through it, they'll see what sort of chunks, right, we need to bite. And what kind of order, uh, there, there should be some order to how they progress through, um. I might suggest, right, we're normally, what, first and third Tuesdays? Is the second and fourth Tuesdays generally okay for folks' schedules and my wife never knows the Tuesday, I'm going anyways. So, I mean, that, that's a generally kind of a dynamic for folks, so if it's right there, we wanna offer up, you know, having a longer day where we have a, a meeting prior to this. Or we expand how a little bit, I, I don't know, but I would say, yeah, weekends are probably taboo for. But I would say, yeah, weekends are probably taboo for work from a consultant point of view, but.
I know our group can be a little difficult with scheduling, but maybe it is easier to get some dates, times from that consultant first and then just go from there, I don't know. Would that be easier, you think? We can start there. I, my, I, I think probably what I would have a consultant start with is do they have availability on Tuesday nights? And then work from there. And for council in general, Tuesday nights after five thirty, you could kind of make that work, I'm assuming?
And March is a better month than February or April.
Yeah. Okay, great.
And, so yeah, I'll be gone the first week in March, I guess it'll be a council meeting anyway.
Okay, thank you. Is that all you needed on that item then? It is, okay. Thank you. And so next, we don't have a lot left, but we'll see how far we get. I don't know how quick this is, but Big Rock Grants with Director Lunschesky.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, just meant to be a touch in, we have a lot of hopes and greens, let me find the right screen share. So I want to make sure we just pass some time to do a quick chat and. Discuss, in this case, Big Rock Park, we kind of moved on from McCormick Park. We will be going after, you know, the park's grants levy for capital, it'll be decided last meeting. So with that said, just a quick touch back. Right away through the programs, I remember the one, one type of offering from King County Parks based on levies. The ballfield itself, it does have grants. I, I don't know how we share this anymore with the clerk's office, but it's in the folder. I don't know if that goes to anybody at any point in time, but it's in the folder, so. We can send it out after the meeting too, which is the mega PDF. So the King Conservation Futures Program for Acquisition, so that is coming up, it is due the sixth. They work pretty quick. They have a whole outline on their, on their website. You can see what they do, but by the ninth of May, they expect final recommendations. The pool is anticipated to be thirty million dollars, but it could be upwards of almost sixty million. And if you do, you know, N R awards, it's an interlocal, they do have a two-year implementation timeline. So if, if you're not quite familiar with conservation futures levy grant dollars. So I tried to go pro and con this and jump back and forth, but only con really is it's limited to. The passive nature of conservation. It does allow certain things to be developed. Like you can't build a trail network on a raw piece of land without parking lots and some amenities like tables, restrooms kind of thing. So certain elements are allowed, some small playgrounds of five thousand square feet or less. Title restrictions do go on property. You can't undo a restriction. They don't like to per se, but they understand things change on how you wanted to develop it. And maybe you didn't get all the parcels you wanted or reasons you needed, so they're, they're, they're understanding. We did a good conversation, they are excited, do goals, considering something, because they do like to spread the money around, and we haven't had. What she said was, we haven't had a distribution in like ten years. So I thought that was nice to hear from, from Ingrid, who's the program manager. And as you can see on the screen, right, you got the, the built-out environment drafted, and then you've got like a little trail. Layout based on some sense of areas we talked about the last meeting. So the conservation future, they are for land purchases and revision of purchases, not improvements, not operations and maintenance. When I say improvements, that's also development, so they don't pay for that, they pay for you to obtain the land to go and then do what they and you are going to agree to. So price of land, or easements, transaction costs, and for those not familiar with easements. Let's say a property owner owns ten acres to the east, they're more than happy to let you do what you want to do on their. You know, half their property adjacent to the park, but they don't want to sell it. The programming is fully planned, recorded, easements and covenants on the land, obviously the property owner asked. Three people have to agree, so there's two, but that is something that is completely allowable. Boundary line adjustments, let's say again, we have contiguous boundary, they're like, you know what, half the back third. Right, you go through appraisal price, get to the amount, and then boom. So there, it's really flexible on what you do with the land you want, and the owners are willing to sell. And they are available to anything that gets that, you know, passive open space done. And one thing too, like if, you know, directions given, motion path. Go get the land. You can apply for this after the fact. Again, there's no guarantees. But you, you don't have to have something from them in writing or approved by their council that says you, you can't have it. So if we buy it now and broke the process, they can reverse. So you can get a little bit ahead of it.
I, I have a sort of a question. I know, you know, the conversation can airways around Big Rock, Paul Park, and I think that's where we're focusing in the short term. You know, work we can do in terms of that, I can say. I did just have a sort of a broader question. I know for years. We talked about extending this McQuarrie Valley Trail and doing some connections to this, you know. Further from Monroe and, 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 is that still, could this, it was more a general question. Could this type of conservation grant also be applied to that type of extension work? Because I know that involved easements, we, we kind of stopped pursuing it after a while because there was some other complexity, but I know there's still an interest in the community. And extending, extending that trail network in terms of more connectivity as well.
Yeah, I don't know how they would treat us as an applicant on land that isn't in our jurisdiction. So, right, we're pretty much, the county owns now the whole panel parcel which is adjacent to the zero land, so it's. Still in city limits, but it is owned by the county, but yes, extending it to the north, three miles of the county line, right, there's things. You know, what these programs don't do is obligate anybody outside of the applicant, which is us. To do something like, hey, let's say the county, you know, we talked about, maybe the county wants to participate in, in something adjacent to Big Rock, right? Well, that's, that's at the county council level, that isn't the cap, but you know, that's, that's actionable by councils. So, yeah, we, I, I don't know, I can ask, but I think in jurisdiction or in adjacency to our parks that we're in elements where they want.
And that's fine, I think that was the scope here, I was just, I was reading the, the, some of the links off the, the page and, you know, there's broader applications beyond. In what was the command special term, I think I would apply much of what council member Napoli to this as well. It's like, what can we do quick? What can we do easy? What, what is this sort of the immediate ROI? But there seems like there's some opportunities for longer-term, what was it, just a footprint?
And, and well, just an FYI, I did ask their parent about that, and it is in the plan. Now, I don't know how quickly, I, I didn't go in and did the conversations, but that. That's sort of, that's part of the county long-term parts plans to extend. And they go, oh, yeah, yes. So for this program too, right, is a one-to-one match, called a fifty percent match, so if we won a million dollars, we had to put out a half million dollars. We would, there are some provisions for communities that can't afford it, but we're not going to qualify. So that's something to consider. When we look at easements versus land ownership or parcels in whole or part, I think that's important to recognize. I did grab out of the, the budget document that was approved, which will be updated when we get to closing the books on twenty twenty-two. But the three oh eight is a park's capital fund, the ending fund balance estimated for twenty twenty-three is going to be just over a million, almost a million point one. And then twenty twenty-four, it's estimated two point four seven million in those funds estimated, right? So those are, are you gonna spend everything you said you'd spend and then are you gonna receive everything you estimated you would receive through the budget process? They recommended, ask for what you need, like, the average is like three hundred grand, because they've got two point five million dollar grants and they've got fifteen thousand dollar grants. She was very clear, if you want three million to complete your vision, ask for your million and a half, like. Very clear, she did, she was very hopeful. We have another meeting scheduled to kind of go over the specificity of our project. And then have grant assistants who will help. They won't write your grant, but they will meet with you and talk about what, what would be considered success in their eyes to their review body. And they do have all their metrics on their website, which not only agencies do, it's nice to have that guy. So that's kind of the. Programming element part of that. Couple of questions that came in today on availability, not only of dollars, but on resource request and constraints. So let's say we want to buy ten acres and it's a million dollars. But we don't want to limit all the availability for. We want, we want something more than the conservation features. So if it's a million dollars, but you would do your appraisal on the piece that you want them to participate in, they will gladly take. The half a million down, be their share to the fifty percent portion of what you would want to conserve or use conservation future dollars for. And go with that approach. And then you can still do other parts and improvements, let's say, you know, the piece. Right around, right here was dry and we wanted to maybe put more than their allowances for future dollars to use. She just said, you know, draw on sand, knock yourself out, just keep us out of it so we don't, you know, we don't put limitation on that. So they're very flexible. Let's say we asked for the whole half a million and expected some sensitive areas where you couldn't do development. And then when we got into development, you found that we could do some of that. That's where you can kind of go ask and roll some of that back. You will be, be planting some of those dollars, I won't say give it back, but. If you're changing the value of the conservation future dollars there. You give a hundred, you know, you give a, a dollar back, that was the prorate amount. So there's, there are some ways to obligate and then unobligate. It's always best to know upfront, but you know, there's so much land out there that isn't investigated, right? We did title review, nothing's untitled, but we did not do a level of recon and, and, you know, any deep investigations of. So more, more to say, and it's on the number, oh, March sixth for the D D.
We're coming right up to seven o'clock here. It sounds like you maybe need some feedback from council or to discuss a little more, or is this just a let us know type?
Uh, well, it's seven, the movement go after it's due March sixth.
Right, okay. Should we, would this fit under admin report? Or should we just add it to new business and continue the conversation? Have we got added to admin report? Yeah, is that fine? Okay, all right, so we'll go and do that. And then last thing, there's always some written reports, some planning, there's the planning calendar. Community Development Monthly Report is always a great, we need improvements for the wastewater treatment fan, and we need that design model. But that will go ahead and adjourn at six fifty and see you back in a couple minutes.
What do you mean, it's pretty, I mean, it's remarkable, it's. It's a, it's a one-time, it's a.
It's, uh.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Duval City Council meeting to work at seven oh six P M. Sir, could you please take the role?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, Mayor Opelander.
Here.
Uh, council member Isaacson. Uh, council member Shaker, here. Council member McHenry.
Here.
Council member, uh, Mercer, here. Council member Saul, here. Council member Napa.
Here.
And council member Love, here.
Thank you. And coming in late here, um, we also need to do the flight slip as well, so. And please, to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in this world with the. Are there any addition, uh, additional corrections to be agenda this evening? Mayor, uh, I'd like to pull the civilian consent agenda. And then also during, I don't know if this needs to be added, but during the city administrator report, they were going to keep you talking about big rock grants, just for your information. Great, thank you. Do we have a motion over this evening's council agenda? So moved. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and with that, we'll move on to the mayor's report, a relatively short report today, although it is pretty hectic at the moment. Uh, we are Snowqually Valley Mayor's meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, I'm a little speedy tonight, so for this comments for the audience, do we have any comments for the audience this evening? Seeing none online and none in person, we'll go ahead and close that and then, um, move on to, uh, actually approval of the consented. It's been a long day.
I think it's Sarah's hand up in chamber.
Um, I, I'm not seeing.
I know you're not on the panelist table.
Okay. Is there?
Sarah, you guys, Sarah. Her hand wasn't, it's not anymore.
Okay, is there anyone, um, online that can get a raise your hand and the clerk will meet you. Sorry, we're a little plucky here.
So go down to participants.
And Sarah, did you want to speak tonight or are you just observing? That's any hand or hearing her, so I will take that as no comment tonight. Uh, now we'll be on to, uh, motion to approve consent agenda.
I'm just saying, no, there are no, um, there were no, uh, other comments sent to the, to the first email address.
Thank you. Um, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So we appreciate it.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Now moving on to schedule items, uh, mayor's report. Uh, we had the Snowqually Valley Government Association meeting this morning, lots of talk on housing bills, uh, transportation. Um, and, uh, the overall legislative session, um, nothing super sensitive, just overall normal conversation. Um, did want to share a council that testified twice in the last week on behalf of Association Washington Cities. Once on the vehicle pursuit bill, uh, which the police chief and city administrator were aware and supported of, as well as yesterday on two of the blank decision fix bills, uh, the Senator Robinson bill and Senator Solomon bill. Um, and the E W C position is to try and find a way to marry the best of those two positions um, to create, um, a humane common sense, uh, fix to the Supreme Court blank decision so that, uh, direct possession can be a criminal offense, however, also providing that significant option for treatment. Um, moving on next week is the Association Washington Cities Conference, uh, legislative conference. We have a president member Henry, uh, past member Natalie and city administrator David, all scheduled to attend. Uh, I'll be working with the clerk over the next few days to get meetings scheduled, hopefully with our fifth, forty-fifth and twelve district legislators. And, um, move on from there and that ends my report for today. Um, city administrator's report.
Thank you. That being clerk James, would, would you be able to share the city administrator update? Thank you. Um, so welcome, thank you for allowing me to present this evening. Uh, working through the presentation slides, so the first is, um, the agenda. Which looks the same every week, I'm running through the, um, same agenda. And next slide. So reminder that, uh, Saturday is our retreat from eight to twelve thirty. Our tentative agenda, um, while now it actually has been, it's a published agenda, um, for the council retreat. So the first hour discussion about committees and, um, uh, appointment to committees for the upcoming year, we have several that require appointments, including our, um, human services grant committee, it's an ad hoc committee to approve the grant applications that we get from our human services uh, community, but also all the other, uh, committees that, um, you all attend throughout the year. Our finance committee, our health safety committee, uh, mayor Kurt Penn will be leading that discussion. Um, presuming tonight that we, uh, council pass their council procedures. Our city attorney, uh, Daniel Henry will be presenting on the council procedures and, uh, doing a presentation on kind of the top ten things to look at in your council procedures. We'll move on then to council goals and how they track to the budget and how, um, we can, uh, report progress and success to those, um, budget goals that council has identified. And then finally, um, the most exciting part of this retreat agenda will be, uh, training on Robert's Rules of Order. And that is the plan for the retreat. Um, moving on, uh, I will pass, uh, the presentation over to Director Thomas to do a presentation on what is happening in our community development.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council and members of the community online. Uh, we found out last week that we did not get the park plan empty. We actually ranked last out of all of them, so it was very competitive, competitive. Some of it's, some of it's based on some of our socioeconomic climate here. Um, our senior planner interviews are early next week, we're super excited, we have three really strong candidates. And we will likely have somebody selected for, um, the next step, which would be to have coffee with the mayor and Cynthia. Uh, so we're again, honestly, it's a long time coming, I cannot say how, I'll say we are to have such strong candidates. Um, we have a porch development preapplication next week, so we're excited about that. Now that the Duval Village, um, parcel, uh, they've got three buildings that they're looking at on the one site. So we're excited about that as well. Uh, we're also moving forward on the House of News Assessment Action Plan. There have been several and significant consultant delays. I had a meeting with them this week. Um, we will be getting a webpage and a survey that will be deployed in the next couple of weeks. And then also a public engagement, uh, not a plan, but plan. Sorry about that. Um, and we'll have funding commission and council workshops in April and May. And then our community open house will probably be in between the two workshops. And then project completion is the end of June, this is a grant that we were awarded by Commerce. And the Snowqually portion, the Valley portion lag because of consultant issues. And then all of the city ones are lagging as well. I'm hopeful that they potentially will give us a little bit more time, but right now they're not, uh, they're not working that way, so we might have to get it done by the last meeting in June. Uh, community development permit data for January, um, you know, it's a pretty busy month. We have, uh, seven permits that we issued, a hundred eighty-two inspections. We have twenty-one permits ready for pickup and a hundred nineteen queued for review. Thank you.
And then. To you, uh, public works update.
Uh, good evening, council staff, citizens, Steve Landeshest and Public Works. Um, so a couple of checkpoints, uh, remodeling of the police department has begun. There's a couple of slides after this, uh, some fun things, uh, quite unanticipated, some, some not so fun, regular kind of request. Uh, so there's that, fire panels, um, we have the fire panels have issues at the wastewater treatment plant, which are over twenty years old, so we, we are replacing those. The materials and the panels themselves are in and they are in process of swapping them out, uh, now. Northeast one forty-second sidewalk is moving along, say smoothly, I don't know if you walked through there, but, uh, curb, curbs in, sidewalks in. Uh, prep happened and now landscape materials were installed today as far as prepping, not physical plants, but we're, we're getting close. Moving along nicely. Uh, we are prepping for the second phase of our Hydra project. Two seventy-five is our dividing line of all towns, so two seventy-fifth and then west is all painted, so now we'll paint two seventy-five and then east, uh, through a solicitation, um, prepping for some roadway, uh, transportation benefit district or C I P. After this, uh, year is complete, so we need to look at other elements. Um, we're looking at using a consultant group who is a service specialist who assesses pavement conditions. So all the granting agencies, we are required to provide a pavement condition index, P C I, for our asphalt to be eligible for their programming and we are working, um, on soliciting and trying to find a group to do that work. They video inventory the entire road and their systems, you know, pass out a, a rating. So there are sweet spots in overlay, um, pavement condition goes from zero to a hundred, you cannot overlay eighty and above. You do have a sweet spot, I think it's about sixty-five to seventy-nine where you're repairing the finished layer of asphalt or it degrades to a point when you get below a P C I of sixty-five, you need to consider reconstruction. So, uh, mathematical exercise and assessments of, of that will be happening, so that will come forward. Uh, remodel at the wastewater treatment plant is in for permit of review. Uh, we're not off bid, we're not going that route, we just start going through the building permit process to see what, uh, other things need to be added uh, to get a, uh, deployed for advertisement. Um, who grants, uh, they take a lot of time, so we just submitted a million and a half federal grant for Third Avenue and the Holberg A O P Aquatic Organism Program. Uh, we're to request that the mayor's office is, uh, soliciting to our legislator, I think it's, uh, Senator Dean Gray, right? Uh, Third Avenue construction, we asked what they would expect, what's a good or bad number, and they said, ask for what you need. So the project right now is being six point two nine, we're gonna ask for two point two nine. Um, that's what I started with, the core site is on there as well. Uh, parks letting grant is due the fifteenth, so we're gonna add from a corn park and the, and the bank stabilization. And then we, we had, we're trying to work with the camera, which group K C B, I'm gonna say, but as adding Third Avenue to the Snowqually River basin project list, so if things come up in the future, we have some opportunity to grab some funds as they come available. Uh, so next slide. So yeah, a quick touch in, on the right, you've got some pictures, Scott, today from the sidewalk project moving along. Uh, what you see to your left is under the coworkers part of the police project, which is why the chief, you were wondering why the chief is still here. Chief is still, still here, cause I have an arm I'm getting worked on, uh, he's the guy who needs a work done. So, uh, what you see there is a physical joint, if you don't know the police station in its original construction, it's actually six separate structures stitched together, uh, purposely. So they build a box, it is a building, they build a roof over it and they're done. So this is removing the floor, there's a seam between the two boxes. As we have these two stove phones are made together, um, that's the inch gap between them. Should it be there? I don't know, but it is. And so the good news is the, the, we did have Ryan, um, our building official, check things out. Everything's good, we are gonna do some stitching of the structure together a little more formally. There aren't really dowels and bolts connecting the two physical structures. It's connected to some other wallwork below, but we're gonna tidy it up. Um, they're working on that, that is actually the seam where now, uh, the next slide shows a wall on the far right. That's the booking room and cell one is on the bar on our top right of that, um, drawing, current drawing that picture. The wall will be the inside wall as you come off the hallway into the now women's locker room. And then to the right in the women's locker room is expanding into the holding cell number two. That's moving forward, the two pictures on the left. Um, the project has new flooring and not only new flooring, finished surface, but we expect to remove all the subfloor in the structure. That is all lump sum into the flooring component of our costs. They have done the work in the kitchen, that is the kitchen there that you see, um. We are finding good flooring throughout, certainly right now the hallways that are exposed. So we will be saving some money, I do not have a number, but we are, we will be saving some money to wreck out the subfloor, replace the subfloor and then the flooring. Uh, so next slide. What we are here today talking about is the contract itself, uh, had, maybe skip one more slide, there's some numbers, I'll go back. Contract is one forty-three, that includes tax, management reserve is ten percent, that's fourteen thousand three hundred. I'd hate to eat into that on day one, we haven't really gotten A track sort of stuff. Um, so with that said, we are looking at a change order for the kitchen. All the existing cabinetry that you see on the right is, uh, lowers and uppers, a sink and a hood. Not all the way to the right, it's a little bit, that's not shown in the frame. So replacing all that with the exact same size, um, cabinets of the existing area, and then if you can see some of the orange tape on the floor of the, uh, plywood, that is adding kitchen cabinetry to the bottom, uppers above. Uh, a corner cabinet like you would have in a regular kitchen, and then to the left of the wall, you see the, and just the edge of the door from the hallway near the, uh, conference room that comes into the laundry room. So on that wall would be full size, uh, like the top left picture that was, uh, Courtney made a wonderful rendition that made it into, not this room, but this. Well, there, there it is. Oh, yeah, so she made much better drawing than I ever real quickly. But yeah, so adding in a full, kind of full, I call it pantry cabinet. It's six feet wide from the edge of the space there into the corner cabinetry. The refrigerator desk go where the void is where the, um, actual cabinets end today. So we, we have looked at this, chief has asked that we quote that out. Uh, we of course hope for a number that would be a little more powerful and not have to worry and ask council for it, but, um, the green credit on the bottom left of the table here, I expect some amount fairly significant for the flooring. Subfloor cannot be removed and not be replaced. So we will have a cost savings. Uh, I can't commit to a number, except I have it, but we are asking for it, but we don't know it all, because they're not exposing all the floor, right? They haven't ripped up every inch of the floor, but everything they have ripped up, um, certainly besides the kitchen would have been, and has been okay to keep. And we are having a really official double check to make sure that it's, it's not just us thinking it's saving money and looks good, but we want to make sure it is good, so. That's where our, the, you know, chief is asked for this, it's a quasi-permanent structure, no matter what comes out of any report we move forward with. I think we all know we're in a five to ten year period before anybody moves anywhere, anything. So we asked that we try to facilitate putting in, you know, the proper equipment for a kitchen for, uh, you know, the growing police department that we were trying to, the chief was, I'm not gonna pick on him, but picking on some workers who like cook in there a lot, like, but it's a busy kitchen, right? You've got not only what we have, breakfast. Probably not much, but dinner, and then you got that flipped again, you got it twice a day with shifts, right? So this does get a lot of use. Uh it is pretty well worn, it is what you would expect is lowbury established cabinetry when it was built in two thousand and four, so. That's why we are here to share, you know, the fact that we have a change order. I don't wanna say it's within my authority, eventually it probably would be, but I wanna make sure you all are aware of that. We're asking for it, we'd like you to say yes or no, so we know where to go and. Yeah, chief to occupy people please, so that wall there that you're seeing it's empty now, we used to have like temporary storage. In that area, we had uh four, three or four cabinets there, but during the process of getting that room cleared out. As we pulled them away from the wall, they collapsed, so they've been there for twenty years and uh they're just particle board, just with all the movement, they've just. Come apart as we moved them away from the wall, they collapsed, so. The reason is that we need storage in there for everything, I mean, the piece been lacking storage for years, we're using just about the other area in the building. That kind of tucked up away and keep it out of the way, but. So the the these cabinets that are proposing would give us additional storage in the kitchen for all the supplies that we need in there as well. Maybe they're all one light material, there's no hot lodge of materials. It's a like a light gray shaker style cabinet. We work with, again, building official, there there is uh fire suppression sprinklers in here, there's been things, so we've. We don't have any problems, cause we're gonna keep the age orange type cabinet set, so anything above is not impacted. Uh I did ask for one thing, uh you know, energy codes coming out, the the chief didn't ask for that. I thought since we're in there, currently to the right is where the range is, and that is a gas kitchen stove. We do not have a thirty or forty amp outlet for uh electric stove, so just. I'll get a number on that, those are the little things we had expected to be able to use in the manager reserve for. So that's kind of where we are at, I don't know, we just have her today, cause I noticed. As the stove without, oh my god, it's only gas and a regular one ton outlet, so. If anybody knows, electric stove has the free prong, little quarter turn, which is usually a thirty to fifty answer.
Thank you, it looks like we have a question from council member Natalie.
Yeah, this is kind of a silly question about switching to an electric stove, but I I know that um. Sometimes when power outages or storms or things that happen, um our police end up staying overnight or staying in town and they would need to use the kitchen. And so, you know, when the power's out, an electric stove doesn't work, whereas a gas stove does work. And typically generators don't run electric stoves or electric cooktops, cause they're just such energy hogs. Anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, I. If that was uh considered that um, you know, you might wanna have a cooking source that can make it through a power outage.
Yeah, we will look at the generator set and we look at the panel briefly, I am not an electrician, so we've asked for that information to. One, verify that should be put a appropriate amp circuit in that it could not only serve by the panel, right? Cause we don't want to upgrade a whole panel if it's not possible, and then two, can the gen set that we have, the police station is an automatic generator transfer switch system. Uh that it could support it, and the reason two is energy code is changing likely July one. New construction will not have gas appliances. I don't expect that to be a requirement of rehab facilities, however, should gas appliances become more costly to replace or whatever in the future. That we have options, cause right now we don't have an option, so that's good. The walls are open, they're here, maybe it's five hundred bucks, maybe it's not, we we thought we would look at. But yes, thanks for the question.
And I would also note that the police department has barbecues as well, so um they are not without cooking equipment without a gas stove. Uh so they're very gritty and um. And creative and have lots of those that cook really well in their department, um so a short period is just not going to let them go hungry.
And they had a gas stove down, we're not recommending changing that, it works not great, so it's just it's. You don't know what's gonna happen in the future, so.
Thank you, um anybody else have any questions? Uh councilor Shaker.
Were you looking for any kind of guidance tonight, Steve, or?
I don't need to, I don't think I can right now need to run a change order. Okay. Normally, but I want you all to be aware, I might have to run one, so if we had to run one because the credits aren't coming in. Or we find something else, we'll come back with a formal G order. At least towards the end, we will come back with a formal change order if we need it and clean it up, but I want you folks to know that we want you to. Support it, like or not, and and give us that guidance and then we'll go to work and see what we need to do in finality on contract management afterwards.
Okay, um I wanna get to anybody else's questions first, um if there is anybody else have any questions or comments. And council member Natalie, you can go ahead.
It was just a remnant of the last time I had my hand up.
Okay, um then uh to help our staff with this, um I would like to ask council. Um if you have any objections at this point to a potential change order, even. Um if if it's within the budget, you don't have to come to council, but if it's outside of budget, it looks like it could be a slight amount. Um but still probably well within our actual overall city budget, uh you went around. Does anybody have any objections to uh replacing this apartment? I'm not seeing any, so I think that's a great light for um director Landeschewski and the police department to do at least, thank you.
And then if we can move on to the next slide, just final slide, um mayor and her mayor report already spoke about the A W C City Action Days. Um just kind of as a highlight of things coming up. In March, we will have um several policies coming to council, so it's just a preview. We were hoping to get a procurement policy in front of council in February, we're not quite ready for it, so it'll be slated for March. March will also see um a food truck policy, or at least um a proposed food truck policy coming to council. As well as an economic development policy for reviewing. So that we can um kind of build off council member Shaker's report. And start thinking about how we might use that economic economic development um fund in the budget. To um start delivering on your goal for economic development. And then the entrance interview for the state auditor is scheduled for February twenty-third, that will be held at the finance and administration meeting. And the next slide is questions, but we're gonna circle back to the Big Rock. Um grants conversation prior to closing out the city administrative board. And where we left it, I think was, we did, we were done with the slides, but we were at a place where. Uh city staff are seeking some council guidance on whether we want to pursue. That grant opportunity along with the other grants that we're looking at, including. So uh that's where we're at, we can kind of back either to the mayor or mayor for terms of facility.
Uh so not pulling anything back at one of the stream, I think some of the, so the question one, right, do we want to go up for some of those dollars, and question two is. What are the dollars, right? I wouldn't believe the three million dollars or so, cause we have to manage. You know, if we want to exhaust our any fund balance, what number are we comfortable with? Uh there's a million-ish now, two and a half million-ish in twenty point four. Just in parks. I didn't consider reading any other source, I don't know if we want to consider any resource, but with that said. I would imagine probably not enough, why did he land, maybe certain pieces or parts they run. I would mention easements everywhere, you probably could get for uh in general easements. We run ten percent of value. Um so properties with a hundred grand, if you want to even over to do actions, it's. So there's there's that to consider, I'm not sure, I can certainly come back uh. At the next meeting or have staff come back and be on, but if we want some more information, like. Still, why I don't know really how I'd even set this up, cause we don't have a plan, it's not like we have a. A horse one that says, oh, we need thirteen hundred feet of trail. We could probably modify that to some extent, but this is so wrong, we don't have a plan, so. I am open for suggestions, um I I do not believe with the amount of encumbrances on the on those pieces. That you could do much, I don't expect the cost, certainly of the space that Jason has to be. You know, market rate. I don't know if that helps at all, I'm gonna offer that up just as an individual, that'll lock them off or not, or let me. I mean. Um so there is, who would make that soon?
Um city administrator McName. Well, I I think director Landeschewski brings up a good point is, we haven't done the park shield of those basic plan, we don't have. Um kind of a structured plan for how we wanna go about developing and um acquiring land for the parks, so. We do realize that we're bringing these conversations to council a little out of order in some respect. But we also don't wanna miss the opportunity to talk to council about these grant opportunities, and so. Uh city staff is also trying to balance getting council information and opportunities while also recognizing. That it's a little car horse situation that we're in.
I I would also add that, I think it was at our last council meeting, we had discussions and. It was definitely the majority consensus that um city hall and having space for employees and community was. Uh appeared to be a higher priority than land acquisition. Uh for director Landeschewski to say spending any fund balance to help fund this, uh would continue to set up further back on that goal. Uh that's already more than ten years behind schedule, uh so just wanna point that out for folks, council member Natalie.
Yeah, um I'm curious, can I share my screen really quick? It's not possible, I'm just trying to see. Oh, here we go. Uh let's see. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so the reason I'm bringing this up is I do believe that this kind of preservation of this area. Is included in some of our adopted plans and. So I feel pretty excited about this opportunity with um. Conservation futures, especially since there would be flexibility, that if we needed some more active space. We could just not use conservation funds for that portion if we did acquire land, so this is an excerpt from. Was this, this is the watershed plan and it's a fish and wildlife habitat habitat corridors, and you can see the park is down here. Um I don't know if you can see my pointer, but uh the park is down here on the lower right, this whole red circled area kind of shows where. We've identified where it would be useful to have uh wildlife habitat corridors, so we would wanna keep. You know, tree cover, um open spaces, things like that, so I think we do have plans that have gone through community review and process where. This is really an important area. And so preserving it, using it for open space is pretty exciting, here's another one from the P T O S, I know it needs to be updated. But it shows a trail connection going out the backside. Uh the existing Big Rock ballpark, you know, whether that's exactly where we'd wanna put a trail, I don't know, but but it definitely shows that. Thought has gone into wanting to acquire land or areas or somehow make trail connections. Into this park, into other areas of the city, so. Um I'm just bringing that up because I I do think we have plans that this is something that is a goal of our community. Um further, I I understand the mayor's points about not wanting to set back a city hall, and I I don't think that this project. Is fighting for the same money and there's other sources of money that uh will not um. You know, in any way. Uh risk a city hall project, um even when we look at funding for the match for the conservation futures. We could use additional grant money, um there's the community partnerships and grants, there's youth sports, there's. You know, other partnerships we could have with King County. Um where we would be looking at a pool of money that once again isn't competing with money that would be um. Used for a city hall, so I don't think we need to just look at how much fund balance do we have. In uh park impact fees, but also think that we could use other monies that we could apply for as match. Um so we'd have money remaining to actually improve the park or other things like that, so. I feel pretty excited about this, I I think this is the time, if we want to acquire land around here, to do it. Twenty years from now, when that area starts getting developed out, um cause it's in our. Our U G A, I think it'd be a lot more difficult to get a hold of that land. Um so this is the time to do it, to think ahead, even if we don't have time to develop it or build the trails or or anything, but um. Conservation futures, just, I mean, if you look at your tax bill, you'll see that your taxes went up and a portion of that is because. Uh some pretty big dollars got approved um for conservation futures, and so our community is paying into this fund. And I think we should find a way to get those dollars into our community, it's um. So it's an exciting program and it sounds like it's pretty flexible, Steve answered some of my questions, so I really think we should. You know, ask for as much as as we think we could use. And I'm sure that if we didn't end up finding a way to use it, if the land, you know, we didn't find land or something, um you know. I'm sure they would understand, so I I don't think we have to fear for asking for too much. Um we'll just, anyway, I don't know exactly how that works, but that's all I have.
Council member Shaker.
Uh yeah, a couple of questions, how how much detail do we use in the grant that we're getting, do we have to summarize? We expect, you know, X, you know, amount of trails, that type of thing, or can we be more general than that?
We can be as general or detailed as you want. Um I think the important thing to consider is just the financial difference between trying to purchase easements to make faith go through and purchasing property. So again, our our financial commitment to apply for the grant is. Um I'm meeting Thursday, I'm not, I I mean, I will do. However, we think you might get best information, I know it's kind of like, you know. C A McNabb said, it's kind of standing in the dark on all fronts. Um I'm gonna write something out and send it out, I don't wanna create an action that is not a council meeting for the attorney, but. You know, I know. Time is running out, we have one more meeting prior to the due date for the application, so I think there. Things we could bear out to that extent, but I think we have to come to terms with, we wanna spend a couple hundred grand and try to get easements, are you in for, you know, a million plus?
What's the downside of east from a city's point of view?
It's easy land, you don't know it, you you will then pay for access right to use it.
And that doesn't change the use of the land, it doesn't somehow revert back to the owner.
It is the owners.
What can they sell? Sure, but the east one still is.
It's recorded on title, if somebody ever wanna get out of there, buy it, I bet.
Okay, so I don't see a huge downside to using an easement approach, that saves saves money. Uh but that assumes land will be. Will, and match, again, a match at fifty percent. Okay, I I I personally would like to pursue this, I have the same concern that uh. Jennifer mentioned in that uh, you know, you may not have this opportunity by the ten years you now. Uh it may be too late uh at at that point, and parks and open space is still important to our community. In in many, many ways, uh I I think we should, I think we should.
And council member Lee.
Um my question was, what's the temperature check on people selling the land? Like, I mean, how much of a shot in the dark is this? Cause that's a tremendous amount of like hours and digging and trying and. You know, hey, would you care to sell us your property? And like, I mean, you know, I mean, that's the one outlier, cause I think it it sounds like, I mean, I think it sounds like a great idea, but it was just like, yeah, all we have to do is send it in. We go, here you go, now it's ours, but I think there's a lot more moving parts to it than that, so I don't have a sense of it, it's just like. How far down the field are we needing awareness in terms of like, yep, we're all ready to sell, you let us spend one, or like, no one's making that.
Right.
Very different, and then also, how much do we know about each parcel in terms of its like actual accessibility, you know? By knowing, he's expecting these questions to be answered now, I'm just saying that that gives us, I think, what we need to understand a little better, like. How much time actually goes into this whole project, cause that's the one. How much time actually goes into this whole project? Cuz that's the one number we're not talking about here is just. Time allocated to figuring out the problem.
Um, city administrator McAdam and mayor person.
Yeah, and one thing I wanna point out is when we get closer to talking about actual numbers and viability of. Purchasing, we will hit a point where it'll be appropriate of those conversations in executive session. So right now we're talking about um kind of policy and potential. But when we talk about actual land acquisition, it's not specific. We would move into executive session.
Mayor person.
So this is a annual grant.
Yes.
It comes up every year.
Yep.
So I'm of two minds. One is I'm really excited and I think that this is worth doing. My opposing thought is, is now the right time to do it. And I hear. It is a weird thing. I mean, we wanna consider this before we get too far in planning that expansion. But the further we get into planning that expansion, also better informs what type of extra land that we might want. Like, you know what works really well here? And oh, we need a little more passive use. And then maybe we go easements, maybe, you know, and so we might get closer to understanding what exactly we want. Instead of just trying to land grab, which is certainly a way to go about it too. I mean. But my, yeah, I just struggled with it because there was one thing in Director Lashinsky's slides that really stuck out to me, which is they were excited. That, you know, it had been ten years since we had come for this grant or gotten money. So. To cash in now and kind of reset that flock, you know, and like, do we wanna wait until we're a little closer to knowing exactly. What type of extra land we might want? Because when we get further in that process of planning the expansion, but I know the original reason too was thinking it might affect how we plan. That expansion is, oh, we also have this parcel. So maybe we don't put as much passive stuff on that. So I, I kinda go back and forth um and. You know, and then of course the matching part. I mean, that's a big, a big commitment for what if or maybe, but um, yeah, I don't know. Those are just my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Mercer.
So not to sort of pile on, I, I, I think, you know, I, I would sort of combine. One is the, the deadline is fast approaching and so. You know, turning this around thirty days, even if it is fairly loose, I'd rather have some of the thought put into it. But the other part is. Just the complexity, even in the case of easements. I mean, it's whether or not, you know, the, the landholder is interested. If they're fully rationalizing the development of that easement, which involves additional work. You know, whether they want folks sort of coming through their property and then the, just the logistical complexity of dishing together. Multiple easements to actually get a quarter, for example, that's like an annexation process. It's, you know, very similar. It's not just the fact that one person's interested to make it. Biable, you need to, to have some synergies across a potentially a number of different parcels. Um, so I'm sort of like, uh, Mayor Pretend, you know. There was good feedback. I think, you know, there'd be another opportunity to be, I just wanted to make sure that we're. You know, thoughtful in terms of how we approach it, um, and, and sort of doing the right plan forward rather than just sort of responding to a deadline. And sort of driving, dropping forward, so.
Thank you. Um, councilmembers, do you have any feedback?
Yeah, I'm sort of second what Ron said, uh. Yeah. Practicality of, I don't know how many easements we're talking about.
Could we want it to be easier more?
Single property owner or? Multiple property owners? Yeah, uh, and there's restrictions on what can be developed on that property. Is that?
Not necessarily on the property per se, but there, there appear to be many constraints in the sense of areas. We have no idea what level of what I'm great they would receive and yet such, so. Yeah.
Yeah, in light of all that, I don't see any, any immediate risk of a property new product, like you know, all first being developed in the next year or two years. Remind of what possibly available around here. So I don't, I don't see a need to rush into it at all, you know. Besides, we have a lot of parks coming online, you know, people itself. The ridge is coming up. There's several new parks up there that. Haven't even been publicized, I don't think, to the people of people.
And Director Lashinsky.
So I do have a meeting with them Thursday. They may tell me, hey, you're so far from being ready to apply. But plan for it, right? So I'm more than happy to have that meeting and then send out a message Friday on how it went, what the expectation for, maybe what they thought. About who stood, um, and then what may be missing is, yeah, you, you have to have a appraisal. They're not gonna sell and allow. Purchase of any land, sorry, uh, without, without that. So there will be plenty of work to do, um, and it is a mountain of work. Um, as we have done property acquisitions or park uh acquisition that easements in the past. So. I appreciate that, um, when everyone misses an opportunity. I do think the risk of those things moving anytime soon is probably low. I do believe they are absolutely ripe for. Non-active space use overlooks, education outreach, trails. I don't see a lot of developability adjacent, maybe in small pieces and parts like we look, but not a whole lot. So I think. Um, I, I certainly recommend I'll have a meeting Thursday. I'll send something out Friday. Or for Cynthia, they'll take a few votes and then wherever I am or not at the meeting on twenty first. Certainly somebody can bring a little tidbit of action forward if it makes sense, or like, hey, we're gonna pump because we do it the next time. So like, I. More than happy to pare that out. It's just one of those things, like, you know, there's not a dedicated grant writer, so you're not studying grants and preparing on an annual basis for this. And there are tons of grants out there right now. There's more than there have been ever. So it's usually a couple of the regular grant processes that we go through and not like. So many above, above what is normal, so.
Councilmember Shaker, and I, I do have a point of information for council that I would like to share, especially regarding easements. Um, then councilmember Natalie.
Uh, the, the question, do you think we need a, a just. Fraser to be for the grants we actually.
I don't think we would need them. We would need them before uh transaction action, certainly out of the grant agents in our own process.
Okay. That's not necessarily tied into the.
I will find out. Okay, I don't believe so. Okay, that'd be, you, you know, useful to know, may not change, change over the year.
Councilmember Devon.
Yeah, I, it just reminded me of when you were talking about an appraiser. I. In a conversation with King County, it was with the community partnerships and grants, the person who manages that. I remember he discussed that they have real estate agents, different, um, you know. People that work um with land acquisitions that can be a resource to our city. Um, when looking at these things. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there. I know that there's a concern that there's a workload and. Um, so I'm hoping when Director Lashinsky talks to this person, I think you said, was it later this week or next week, that um. Maybe we could find out what kind of resources are available for small cities as we try to explore land acquisitions and, and the workload that's involved there. Um, I also, you know, just to, to go back uh on the point of timing. Um. I really feel like. It would do a disservice to the design if we didn't. Um, know what land might be available. Uh, it's a pretty narrow. The ten acres, even though it sounds like a lot, it's pretty narrow and. You know, if we knew there was some flexibility along the edges in some certain places. Uh, you know, maybe the design would be more efficient, better. In the long run, and it would be uh unfortunate to not know that ahead of time. Um, I also just wanna mention on the easement. I'm not as. You know, I mean, easements, if that's all you could get, um, seems like, you know, a possibility, but that wouldn't be my first choice. It just seems. Like it would be problematic over time, having to deal with an easement. Um, and I don't, I don't really know why. Um. If we had funding, especially of conservation futures, willing to give us money, why we wouldn't pursue. An actual purchase just to keep it clean, um, and not have to mess with that going down into the future. So anyway, I, I just, I do feel like the timing is good to, to look into it. Um, I would be curious how much detail the conservation futures application requires. Because. You know, I mean, we could always try it. Sometimes you don't get it the first year and we can try again, but um, it seems. Like it's a good time. It's a community priority to preserve open spaces and this is a great opportunity.
Thank you. Um, I've got a point of information on that, on then Director Lashinsky. Um, for those that weren't here when we did the two seventy fifth sidewalk project. Um, I wanna remind, you, you share with council that the two seventy five sidebar project is on a P S E is easement. Um, and the property owners have no rights to that easement, uh pressured council to not develop that portion of the land. Um, and in fact, council had the city sign an agreement that we will not mow those blackberries. Um, anymore. And so it is a partial project, um, and. That those are, that's the pressure that landlords give on an easement that they don't own. So working for an easement to put trails through people's yards is going to be a much bigger lift. Than even putting exercise equipment or mowing. Invasive species on a public street. So that's a really important consideration when you think of the time factor. When you get into that. Um, if you have a landowner that's unwilling to provide an easement. Um, which ends up escalating your costs significantly. Uh, so I think that this concept means. Yeah, I think we all have agreed most of the times that we really want to stand the marks. But I encourage councils to stay focused on what our core functions are. Um, and right now. We need our staff to be focusing on the projects that are in the budget. And focusing on moving forward with our city hall so that we have a sweet place for our staff to, to work. Um, these are really exciting projects and it's really easy to get off track of what our goals are. But I, I would encourage um that to continue to stay at the forefront so that we stay focused on what was approved in the budget. Approved, um, and therefore what's approved in the budget is approved in our staff work plans. And try not to take folks off for, especially for opportunities that come forward on a yearly basis. Um, so it sounds like we don't have consensus at this point on. How to go about it. Uh, Director Lashinsky has a meeting on Thursday. Uh, but I would ask you all to think about that and also feel free to contact me or Director Lashinsky on um some of those challenges to talk about more in depth. Um, um, as we move forward so that the city makes the wisest decision in this case. So thank you. All right, Director Lashinsky.
Yeah, so yes, meetings Thursday at ten AM. I guess I'm gonna upgrade. I think the, the tenor of maintaining flexibility is important. This product, if they are not a willing seller, does not allow use condemnation to acquire property. So it is willing sellers. That said. Flexibility is key. Again, nobody. You know, whatever we can get, we will try to get, um, but I'll, I'll do it again to learn and we'll. See something from you uh Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Um, that is the end of this, the administrator report. Only one council committee reports. Are there any meetings that have a report this evening?
Public safety.
All right, councilmember Shaker.
Let's see, related to uh hiring, we have a new officer that was sworn in, uh. Amanda was the first name, she's. What's her? And, and uh, uh, I think that is our current only female officer. Is that correct? Okay, so that's very exciting and getting an officer, giving more so for, for, uh, don't see the female officer, which. Of course, just to tell us you're doing the right thing in the police department, so it's a lot of work. Uh, we had a, a, a couple of lateral oral boards in the last uh. Week, uh, two weeks, I guess. Uh, I think one is still in the works. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great, okay. So it's a, that's a very good candidate, the, the, you know, in my opinion as well. Uh, let's see, body cams. Uh, chief's made some excellent progress with the body cams, uh, located three different companies. As a narrow down, he will recommend. One of those companies called Lens Lock. Uh, Lens Lock uh has an advantage in many ways, including cost. Uh, but they also do the redaction work, uh, for us, which is really a big deal. Uh, it'll save a lot of staff, uh, staff time. Uh, uh, not a hundred percent, but I guess they do a good part of the redaction, uh, for us. So anyway, uh. We're going to see that maybe next meeting?
Um, it's gonna be pushed up to the twenty first. I wanted to have time for a community presentation, which looks like. If everything goes well, it's gonna be March eighth, but I'll get something out to council regarding that.
Right. Um. Let's see, uh. And uh. Fairly, just a second, trying to read my own handwriting. Uh. See, is that it? Um, that, that's it. We already saw the police department remodel, uh, in progress. We already met our new mental, mental health professional.
Thank you, councilmember Shaker. Any questions for our public safety chair? I think councilmember Natalie's still up from before.
No, I, I actually have a committee report, so I put my hand up.
Great, um, go ahead, please.
Okay. Uh, so we had a finance and administration committee meeting on Thursday, January twenty sixth. It was very brief. Uh, we went over the December and January sales tax reports. And we also looked at some possible investments in the investment. Um, I think we saw the, the report as well, the investment report. So that's about it. And I. I'm guessing the rest of council will see the sales tax reports um soon. Um. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for councilmember Natalie? Seeing none, are there any other committee reports? All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Are there other council reports this evening? Uh, okay, we'll go ahead and move on unfinished business. The first step is council procedures. Uh, city administrator McAdam.
Uh, yes, so I think we'll start with actually the presentation from. Uh, Mayor Pretend that will set up the conversation about. Uh, the changes to the council procedures that are being proposed tonight. Um, but uh, let's pull up that presentation. I'll hand it off to Mayor President McHenry. And that's super, don't worry. Uh, we'll have to go back a few. That's the last, there we go. Okay, so the next slide, please. All right, uh, just wanted to give a brief history, um, for fun, I suppose, and just for everyone. I mean. This, I think this might have actually started in twenty seventeen. The mayor would know better than me, but my latest email regarding this policy was twenty eighteen. Which is the year um I came on council and started getting involved in this, um, myself. I'm the only current member that's worked on it, um, former council members, multiple attorneys, city administrators and clerks have worked on versions leading up to now. This originally was an ethics policy and it just. Figuring out how it would realistically work with implementation was tricky and it never sat well with us. And we tried to work through some of the problems. Um, and then we had received a recommendation of, you know, let's just revamp the full council procedures. So council agreed. And the ethics ad hoc committee became council procedures committee. And so since council member Hope resigned last year. We were just at this point and with a new city administrator, it's like, let's send it to the attorney and just work on what we got done. We were pretty much all the way through it. Um, and we knew that potentially there could be changes and, and things. We didn't, we just didn't know what we didn't know. So. Um, that result is the version that you've all seen in the packet. Next slide, please. So high level changes in general, um, what the committee over the years has worked on. Is trying to make language more collaborative, um, you know, between the mayor, council, administration. So for a little example would be. Um, you know, instead of referring to something as checks and balances, talking about continuous improvement together and making things better. Um, anywhere we could reference an R C W instead of just restating what that R C W says is preferable. Um, anyone in here who's a coder or works with technology knows, like, you don't wanna have to change something in multiple places. So it's just easier so that if something changes, you don't have to remember to go back and change what you've written out in there. Um, also, you know, little changes. There were um multiple areas where city administrator was missing. Cuz that was not always present in our city. And then, you know, annual, biennial budget or just calling it a budget for simplicity. You never know, who knows if that changes again. Uh, technical wording, uh, again, really. Technical wording, again, really stressing the collaborative language, while we all have separate roles to work together. And then, one of the biggest ones is the last bullet, so if you could just go to the next slide. Identifying trainings and procedure, and a part of that is our procedures that we need to review annually. So this is just one example of a change or addition that we had made, and it was really important to me. Because so much time had passed since council procedures were touched. That we actually reviewed them, you know, if you join a council, you get a binder. And it's up to you to kind of look through it, but to actually have an annual or whatever. Frequency of, you know, review to go through it and train, and then we added in other things, we could think of emergency management protocols, the insurance. And our city attorney has a lot of really great information to. Give us all and train us in various things, next slide. And so next steps are just, our city administrator is gonna walk us through feedback, proposals, changes that we can decide and get consensus on. It would be great to approve these, I, they may not be perfect, but they're, you know. Closer to what we want to be doing now than our older procedures, they have the right updates. So no matter what we change, I just think the sooner we can adopt them, we can start operating under those and just have a fresh look at that. And then there is one section you noticed was empty, and that's ethics, we're gonna look at that separately, but it's basically like a code of conduct type section within our. Procedures, and so originally, I just wanted to also say that this ad hoc committee. Was going to work on a social media policy next, I don't know, we've had a lot of turnover in our council, so I don't know if that's still something that's of interest. And I thought, since we're gonna talk about committees and things like that at our retreat, that that's something you can just think about. And we can talk about on Saturday maybe, and that's it.
Mayor Prochand, I did wanna find out that city actually does have an existing social media policy approved for council, approved by council. So there is an existing policy, so for those council members that don't have it, you can ask for it and get it. It does need to be updated, but we're in books for six years now.
Yeah, sorry, I, yeah, I think it was 2015 or so that that was made, but yeah, it was. Knowing that it needed to be updated, because there's a lot of case law now that's hopefully, I think, happened, I think when I first got elected. It was all kind of still in the courts, so hopefully there have been some outcomes that can direct how we redevelop that policy. Thanks.
Okay, so next, so. Deputy clerk, in the packet is the city council procedures manual markup. So I wanna make sure that we have it up, and then I'll just go through each comment that you all have in your packet. So the process I thought we would work through is. Bring up the city council procedures, look at the comments, so what I did was I took the clean version. That I delivered to council probably three or four weeks ago. And then while we're in this process of my receiving feedback from council. I went then in and marked up the sections that I received feedback on. So at this point, just going through each of those comments. Getting kind of a nod, yes, no, maybe some motions, maybe some votes on whether to include. The proposed language or proposed change, and then when we get through all those comments. The next step would be a motion to adopt the council procedures either as is or as amended by these comments, if that makes sense. Okay. So the first comment that we received. Is in, on page four. Under 2.2 role of council members. Hopefully you'll be able to see my comments. There we go. Okay, so we had a request, is there interest in adding additional specific responsibilities to this list in 2.2? So under 2.2, it discusses the role of council collectively responsible for establishing policy, and then there is. A list here. There's a part A of. Establishing policy with 83B under it, enacting local laws, provide public leadership and decision-making, the request was whether or not. Council wants to add some of the other specific things in the RCW, like defined functions of officers and employees. Defined powers and duties of officers and employees, fixed compensation for officers and employees, fixed working conditions. Officers and employees, a lot of what we talked about last time. With regard to kind of the, the responsibility of council and responsibility of administration. So that was a proposal that was made, so up for council deliberation on whether to add additional things to this.
Councilmember Verser.
You know, and, and I sort of appreciate Councilmember Mathel and sort of looking at this, I think there's a, also always a double edged sword with specificity, I think it. Defines, but it also sort of boxes folks in, because it's never fully exhaustive. And it's also another area to be updated, I, I think my biggest takeaway and. This would be maybe a little more specific was on the example that were given, you know, the consultant approved versus defined category, you know, that's. I think this was an example, but I think there could even be an argument made in terms of. What our role is in terms of what we agreed on and some of the, the. From a budgetary process, so. Higher, just my personal opinion is where there. There's specific added value in terms of clarifying an area of confusion, I think it's worthwhile putting in some of the specifics, I think. The downside is it, it limits some of the flexibility and, and evolving, because this is a living document and. Wherever possible, I would, if we were gonna do something like that, I would want a reference. Made to another document that was already existing, like, like some of the. Employee definitions, we already did in terms of defining that type of thing versus codifying additional language. That's my two cents, other council members.
Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I, you know, similar thought, I, I'm not, you know, totally against adding an additional things, but. It's been a while since we've gone through this, so I'm really stretching my memory here. Remembering back to when we were talking about this, I mean, if you read down that list. Establish policy, enact local laws, and the bullets under there, you're at a certain level. And so if we're gonna dive in, and what other specific things, you know, are we not putting on the list, or where do you draw the line? So, while it could go on there, and I, again, I'm not totally opposed to it. I'm always struggling with where do you draw the line, and so I, I like that potential idea of. You know, just referencing. Well, it kind of does, talking about, you know, yeah. But you know, if, if we wanted to really get in depth on something, a one cheater of all those super specific things pulled from the RCW, but again, we were trying to get away from. Putting things in that may change somewhere down the line, and then have to remember to go back and update it, so anyways.
Councilmember Seppel.
Yeah, I kind of see this as. Getting involved in the, almost the day-to-day operations of the administration. To me, that's, it's like a clear line between council and administration, you know. Yeah, you know, we kind of set the policy, but I don't think we. Determine the day-to-day operations of, of, you know, what is it, all the. Functions of the officers and employees. I honestly, that is part of my job as a council member. Define the power and duties of officers and employees, that's. I think that's up to the, the administration, the mayor and the directors, and then fixing the compensation. I think we may have some role in that, because we are approving the budget, but. And then the working conditions for officers and employees, I mean, yeah, we can say we want great working conditions. But I'm not gonna go in and say, you know, hey, you need to, you need to move this cabinet over there, add another one up here, and that's what all these things. Mean to me when I read, when I, when I see it, so. I can't really find, you know.
Councilmember Levitt or Shaker?
I'll, I'll agree, my opinion, so, so, so I'd agree with the original comment that John brought up, I, you know. And. And I, I really, you know, dislike, you know, stepping, you know, over the boundary of, of what, you know, I consider of the. And staff responsibilities versus council responsibilities, and if anything, if I'm gonna, you know. Err on one side of the other, all err on the staff and staff side of things. So I, I would not be favored putting too many specifics.
Thank you. Councilmember Nothing, Pastor Amber East. So this was her recommendation, so I'm gonna hear from the rest of the council first.
I haven't had a chance to even speak on behalf of this request.
Councilmember Mathel, hold on, please. It's, Councilmember Levitt has an opportunity to speak. And since it was your amendment, we'll have you speak last, Councilmember Levitt.
Yeah, I mean, short version, and I sort of, I agree with everybody else, like, I think the specificity of it, you kind of lose the. The broad strokes are actually better than anything like this, but the one thing I think that we could think about. Is that there's just no line item for like, you know, work with the city to, you know, to split it by budget. And some of that stuff, there's nothing about budget in like the duties, and some of this stuff under these smaller kind of more specific bullets, or it's actually, would actually be covered by a single line. Rel, you know, relevant to that, if we wanted to have that in, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we need to have it in, I think it's fine the way it is, so maybe clear there. But if we did feel like that was an easy way to sort of cover that, we also think about those things, but in a more broad stroke of it, along the lines of that. And I would, but someone else would be right better than me saying it, but something along the lines of that. But yeah, otherwise, I don't.
Thank you, Councilmember Mathel. We can't hear you, Councilmember.
Yeah, I, I actually wanted to try to explain where I was coming from on this before. You know, starting discussions, since it was coming from me, but. This list right here is directly from the RCW that explains council responsibilities, and I think the conversation that council just had. Shows that council may or may not even know that these are our. You know, our duties and responsibility, this is not overreach to list these as our responsibilities, this is exactly what we've been empowered to do based on state law. And there's been a lot of confusion, and that is why I wanted to add it, because over time. There has been confusion about whether council can weigh in on these things. And yet it is exactly outlined that this is legislative. This, almost the wording is straight from the RCW. That this is council responsibility, and there's a pretty big list of things that are listed here as council responsibility. And these are excluded from that list, and if you look at any list anywhere on what are the duties of a council member. Typically, these suggestions I'm putting here are top on the list, it's. It is part of what the legislative branch does. And you know, how far into the weeds you interpret what it means by fixing working conditions. You know, of course, you know, there might be a fine line there about, you know, how detailed you get when you, when you set working conditions. But, you know, deciding, you know. All kinds of things that have to do with employees, employee compensation, employee benefits. You know, time off, fringe benefits, all of those are a council responsibility. And I think the fact that we are having this conversation and there's uncertainty that this, this list might be an overreach, is a. A reason why it should be in here, because I, this has been an ongoing. Issue of not understanding that this is a council responsibility. So, I mean, that's where I'm coming from with this, there is a pretty long list included here. It's very strange that these items aren't included, so I thought, wow, they should be included, because there's been confusion regarding these things. So, maybe the attorney could weigh in and look at this list and, and weigh in on whether the RCW specifies exactly these items.
Real quickly, I want to call point of order and ask council members to not make assumptions about what other council members know about their statutory roles and responsibilities of being an elected official in this community. And then Councilmember McHenry and then City Administrator Mathel.
Yeah, I, I think I understand better where you're coming from, Councilmember Mathel, but, you know, one of the discussions around. Well, in my various versions of the committee that came together and discussed this was. Section 2.2. It's really early on in the policy, because we, I, I do remember we had some, a similar discussion, is how detailed do you get? Why was the original policy more high level, and, and it's just really because it's just outlining those bigger ideas, you know, those four things. Establish policy, enact local laws, provide public leadership and decision-making. And the, I think it's up on this, yeah, right there, A, summary of council duties and responsibilities as provided. But not limited to the Washington Administrative Code and Revised Code of Washington. And that's where you can go to look up different things, and if you look at the next section, 2.3, right below that. The role of the mayor, again, it's not going into a list of what the mayor does, it's just really high level, responsible for administration of the city. And lists a couple of things, similar to council, how it lists some things, but. I think because this is only section two, it was not meant to be exhaustive, it was just meant to kind of provide a framework. And which a lot of things fit into, I think that's, that's what the committee had believed the intention of section or chapter two was.
Thank you, now after hearing Councilmember Mathel, did anybody have a change of opinion on which direction should go in this section? Councilmember Shaker?
No, no change within our. As. Councilmember McHenry, just, just, Ms. McHenry just pointed out. It, it's already referenced in there, I, we, we shouldn't be repeating anything that's, you know, referenced from a different source, because that will simply get outdated. Huge of one, so I think. Amy's comment about, you know, this is a general framework, and if you want specifics, look here, which is over in the document, should be one of those.
Councilmember Levitt?
I'd just say also, like, maybe it would be good, maybe you could help us with this a little bit, is to just establish just in general, like, what the altitude of this is, just kind of generally supposed to be. And then just what the aim is, I mean, I think, I think I have an idea, but that might help just gender to restate it, so it's the top of all our minds, because. You know, it's important to know like the granularity of certain things at certain times, but this is a manual, you know, and, and like, what's its. You know, what's its main purpose, it's not to get into an exhaustive research exercise on the, on the very fine, you know, fine elements of the role. I don't think, but maybe, I don't know, when you have that in mind, if you were to explain that, that might help us as we like, hear the. Notes that kind of gives a bunch of setting to be on.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I don't wanna be here all night, but I could go section by section, really, in general. It did take a lot, you know, we had to read through multiple times and then work backward, and then pick different sections to work on in different. Meetings, and it took a bit to wrap our heads around it, we were working off of the original. Is it 2012 copy? Or 15, okay, oh, that makes sense, social media, okay. So yeah, I mean, my understanding, and I, you know, certainly our attorney could weigh in on that too, because he has worked with a lot more of these than I, only really looked at this, and then. We would research other cities and look at their procedures to try and get ideas, are we missing anything, but. In general, one of the things I brought up in my presentation was trying to, where you can reference. Like, you can go look at the RCW, because that can change. And anytime there's a change, do we wanna have to always go back and change our procedures? Just trying to reduce redundancy and not type out things that are already present in code. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, it sounds like I can move on to the next. Okay, in 2.6, there are two places where I marked a comment. But both are largely surrounding the same issue, for reference.
Um, for reference, today you all received, um, a series of emails regarding this issue of council members serving on advisory, uh, commissions, committees and boards. And so, um, the last of that email string was at three or four P M. Um, councilmember Natalie and our city attorney had a pretty robust conversation about this issue, um. At, at this point, I guess I would ask, so there's a very specific proposal, though this email string kind of goes into a little more depth. Um, so I'm going to talk about the first, but because, um, in the email string, councilmember Natalie, um, states that she wants to make a different proposal, I think it's important to hear from her. In the comments that I received, the question was specific around whether to adopt language from Gigg Harbor. But I think that probably is an ancillary question to the proposal that councilmember Natalie wants to make as a result of, uh, her, uh, email discussion with our city attorney. So I think we should probably let councilmember Natalie.
Yes, please go, councilmember Natalie.
Sure, I, I think there was actually another comment and I don't see it here, it was, um, let's see, maybe it was further up.
So there, it went from upstairs to point six and I dropped a comment there. And then I dropped another comment in C, um, which, again, my.
The one, okay. Yeah, the items, the one under section C is the one that you're referring to, the conversation between myself and, uh, the attorney. So I don't know which one you want me to weigh in on or like explain.
We could probably start with the, the response from, uh, three o'clock today.
Okay.
Um, where it says, I plan to request that the council procedure policies be modified in two point six C one. Is otherwise the Gigg Harbor issue, if that's not accepted, it probably becomes somewhat moot.
I, I do want to make a point though, Gigg Harbor is a different form of government. It is a council manager form of government and not a strong mayor for a, who's, um, it's, there was a, this.
They have said, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's a, is it a strong mayor or council manager? I didn't hear that.
I, I guess it is strong mayor, so I.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought too, and I was confused when you said that, okay. Yeah, they are the same form of government, okay. So, um, on this one, the reason I brought it up is because it seemed to contradict past practice and also contradict what I see happen in other cities regularly. And this is whether a council member can be on an advisory board, an advisory commission, um, because that had been practiced in our city and I see it in other cities. And so then there, you know, ensued a conversation of whether state law, um, you know, weighed in on this or if it was internal Duval Municipal Code that was restricting it. And, you know, what types of commissions that my, this language might control. Sounded like there was some gray. It, it wasn't all advisory commissions, it really was just ones that had been outlined by Duval Municipal Core, uh, code to restrict, um, disallowing council members. And then the RCW state law also had certain ones like the planning commission and I think the civil service commission that couldn't have council members. So, uh, what I was proposing is because that can be confusing that different boards and advisory committees may or may not allow council members that perhaps we should either remove the restriction from here because it feels very overarching to everything, even though technically the law doesn't, uh, require it to be restricted and it would go against what we had been doing in practice. Um, so my proposal was to either remove this section that says that council members can't be on boards and commissions. And or clarify that says only there are certain boards and commissions that council members are not allowed on. Those would be a planning commission, civil service commission, and then, you know, say others may be restricted um, based on, you know, Duval Municipal Code. And those would be like the Parks Commission doesn't seem to allow council members. I don't think it was intended to allow council members, but who knows? So I'm wondering how the rest of council feels because, like I was saying, um, most cities seem to allow this practice, um, on some committee, commissions or committees, especially ad hoc ones, even some standing ones, um, council members can participate, so. That is my proposal to either remove this restriction or at least clarify that this only applies, this restriction only applies to certain boards and commissions.
And city administrator McNabb?
Yeah, I just want to make clear in case, um, council hasn't looked through the email stream, but there's lots of good information here. Um, the, the sanction I think that is being drawn out here is ensuring that advisory boards, commissions or committees that are, um, put together and, um, authorized to advise council should not also have council members serving kind of in a double fashion on a board that is advising council because you're already a council member sitting there trying to receive information from citizen advisory boards. So the, the question is whether it's appropriate to have council both be on advisory committees and then receive the advice of citizen advisory committees, if that makes sense.
So interestingly enough, um.
Hold on please, um, we haven't heard from the other councilmembers. So we've heard from you and city administrator McNabb and councilmember Supple.
Well, um, city administrator McNabb said maybe sounds, I mean, if you have a, a, uh, council member on both an advisory board and on the city council, it's like there's almost a conflict of interest there. Um, but I'm not sure what examples we have here, advisory boards. Uh, where we might have a city council member on, um, you know, so.
I, I can give a few, um, so in our last, um, update of our trade retention organs, I could give sewer and critical areas. Um, we had advisory committees that contained both, um, council members and members of the community. Um, but as our community changes and we have, uh, we're increasing cultural diversity, I think there's a real risk of, um, the power dynamic of an elected official swaying the um, opinion and the discussion of an advisory committee. Um, and to city administrator McNabb's point, um, if you're having citizens, uh, or residents, I prefer to call them residents, they don't have to be citizens of the United States. They can be just residents of our community, serving on some of these ad hoc committees that are advising the city council. Uh, but they shouldn't have any influence from the city council whatsoever. Um, and that it's, it crosses a boundary, uh, and creates a power dynamic where certain members of those committees will not feel comfortable speaking up. Uh, so besides the appearance of conflicts of interest, I think there's a real, um, uh, cultural issue that we need to make sure that we're addressing and making sure that, uh, our committees, as we provide them for volunteers, are welcoming to all in our community. And there are people from, um, different cultures that are not trusting their government, uh, that live within our community and that can really staple their engagement as well as their participation while they're on the community. Um, councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of a, as a, from a quasi judicial legal perspective and just perception, I mean, perception is, is important oftentimes as, as the sort of fact. I, I think separating the two makes sense. I knew there were opportunities when Nair was on, um, the planning commission council member paper, I think attended, but he wasn't a member of sort of that group. He was there to observe and I think, you know, trying to find a middle ground, I, I wouldn't, I think there's value sometimes in us engaging or, or, or monitor, that's, I want to make it in that in sort of a, a snarky way because I wouldn't want to influence, but I think where you want to sort of see what's happening or your interest or there's outreach opportunities. And I wouldn't want the language here to preclude that. But I think from a member perspective in that specific term, in terms of member where you're functioning, you're driving policy or decision and outcomes is really where I think it gets very gray and, and, you know, I think for me at least, that would address, you know, that you're not like excluded from any type of participation engagement, even if it's just to see what's happening, I'm interested in doing some outreach. But I don't have a problem specifically with drawing that line in terms of membership on a specific board or advisor because I think it's just a much clearer, clearer line to draw.
Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, Ron brings a very good point and, and his example, why my purpose, attending the planning commission meetings was to educate himself. And I was actually very careful not to express my own opinions, uh, uh, in those. But, uh, but it is useful for council to be able to listen, you know, assuming it's a public meeting, for council to be able to listen in, uh, and some of the advisory committees to, to get educated. Uh, a lot of good information in there, a lot of really smart people, uh, in, in those, in those settings. Uh, I, uh, I assume in the context of this document, advisory bodies that intends an advisory body to the city council, is that a correct interpretation?
I'm sorry, um, so the way I read it, I think the answer is yes. Uh, so the attorney, I think you read it the same way that advisory body in the context of this document and this provision is an advisory body to the council.
Yes, okay, we may want to clarify that because I think that's a really important, uh, clarification for the, for the discussion we're having right now. And, and I think serves to, I guess sway my opinion, uh, that, yeah, I can see where a council member should not be a member of an advisory committee that then comes back to the council, uh, with specific recommendations.
Thank you. Um, mayor president McHenry and councilmember Levitt?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I agree with councilmember Mercer and Shaker on those points, um. And maybe there's some words, something we can change in here to make it crystal clear on what's meant by that. Sounds like it might cause confusion and we want to make sure that our intention right now is known by people by ten years from now, so.
And did you have any feedback, councilmember Levitt?
I do, I guess I, I agree with everyone, I mean, I think it's, it's not a great look to actually like influence a committee and then come in and then, so, uh, I don't know, I think, I think, I think maybe clean up the language like councilmember Shaker had, uh, recommended a little bit will help that does sort of clarify a bit, but, I mean, I'm.
Thank you. Do we have a comment or? That's going to be, yeah. Uh, councilor Shaker?
Final, one of his comment or question, but the, our, our committees, our standing committees, public safety committee, for example, is, uh, cancer was an advisor, uh, trying to do a council, obviously has council members on it. Uh, does that need clarification somewhere?
Those are caught by committees, so it should need any additional. And, and by definition, they're not a citizen advisory body.
And they're not a citizen advisory body, okay, good, thanks.
Just one quick thing to, it's in a later section that talks about council committees, so not missing.
Okay, uh, councilmember Natalie?
Yeah, I just want to give you, I think in general, I completely agree that it would be weird to have and potentially a conflict of interest to have a council member participating in certain advisory committees, a hundred percent. I get where you're coming from. I, I think an important distinction is that taking this out or clarifying it, um, would allow for circumstances where it would be helpful and appropriate. And the example that was given that just happened to be in an OPMA discussion from the attorney general at the state was, you know, a city council wants to try to figure out economic development options, engage the community. So they decided to create, uh, a commission of, or a committee of three council members and community members so they could engage in a, in a, in a work group type session to study this together to where a council could engage with a group of the public. And it created a, a, uh, a benefit and that the council had a way to engage with the public in a group. Um, and so there may be certain bodies that the council might see that there's a usefulness of this happening. And so my concern was that the way this is written would potentially exclude those types of opportunities of the council to form some type of work group committee to engage with the public. Um, anyway, if no one else is interested in it, i- it's fine. I, I just, this did seem somewhat unusual to restrict any, uh, you know, ad, advisory body or, or committee from having a council member on it. And not that there aren't absolutely a hundred percent those groups that it wouldn't be appropriate to have council members, but to exclude it for all and not have any, any potential option um, to deviate for certain circumstances, that's all I was asking for. I did not want to open up all committees and advisory boards to council members. I, I one hundred percent agree with what was stated here. Um, so I, I hope that it makes it clear where I was coming from.
Um, city administrator McNabb?
Um, so thinking of clarification, um, if we rewrote council members' role, relationship and membership with membership in, in relationship with citizen advisory bodies, I think that would offer clarification that's talking about something very specific in this mission.
And, and outside of council procedures, there's nothing that also stops the mayor from creating just a committee like that with council members and members of the public to explore and study an issue. This is specific to city advisory bodies, um, and how council should act. Uh, but it does not preclude other committees from forming other requests, including families, yeah. Uh, councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, I was also going to say you could sort of read paragraph two a little bit that way as well, it's specifically around testimony, but it, you could, it, it's relatively broad as, you know, unless they're the quorum of the council. So there's some ways you could, you could supplement this as well, whether it is through appointment by the mayor or whether it's creation of a, another council or potentially bringing a motion in front of the council to, to sort of grant that authority if there was a special need. So I thought read that as sort of a, not miss it being out, but providing a little flexibility there.
All right, uh, it seems like we don't have consensus to inform with the recommendation, uh, by councilmember Natalie, but we do have consensus for minor language modifications. And we can move on to the next, yeah.
Okay, so the next item is in, uh, three point one, uh, actually three point two. It's a staff administrative support for council requests. Uh, there is a recommendation from councilmember Natalie in sitting the expectation that council members will be copied on a response from city staff to constituents.
I think that's a standard expectation in city government that a council member asks staff to respond to constituent. Staff is pretty consistent on copying those councilmembers. And if council wants it in there, um, it's up to council, but I, I think that pretty much happens almost a hundred percent of the time as it stands. Uh, mayor pretend?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to say that that doesn't happen, I'm saying sometimes people are busy and, and I potentially flip through the cracks, but it just, you know, it's probably been during times where understaffed, um. So, I mean, I'm fine with putting this in there, I think, like you said, it's an obvious, um, uh, expectation that should happen. So I, since it's a procedure, I don't see any problem with sticking that in there.
Councilmember Mercer?
Yeah, and I, I don't have any objections to adding it, I kind of read the paragraph a little different in terms of, you know, the, the council member receives something from a concerned constituent, they forward it to, um, staff. There is a, it says, you know, with the expectation of a timely response, which it sort of indicates that there's going to be a response from staff back to the council member, so then they can follow up directly with the. So then they can follow up directly to the constituent. So I kind of read that as being built in, but to your, your, the mayor pretend's point, you know, we want to qualify, sorry, I don't have an objection, but I read the dilemma a little differently.
Councilmember Sappel.
Yeah, so it's the, um, the, uh, council member received the constituent concern, not the city administrator, expect the city administrator to reply back to the council member not to directly to the constituent. So, um, yeah, I, I guess I could go either way. I mean, man, probably not going to be a big deal.
Councilmember Shaper.
So that's, that's not the suggestion. The suggestion specifically is that the council member just copied it on the response to the constituent. So the, the, there are, I think many times when it's appropriate for staff to, uh, reply back to the constituent as opposed to, you know, council members. Now, maybe there's times too where it should be filled through the council member. I can't think, you know, an example one way or the other. But, uh, but the request here is only to be common.
So pretty easy to just include with a CC council. Okay. Um, I will find a place to drop it. Okay. Okay, the next item is on page seventeen. Um, I'll, I'll just kind of, I, I put it here, but it's more of a high level process question is whether or not council wants to adopt uh, a process, some cities have it, uh, changing your format for your meetings so that after every new business item, you would have, it would be new business item, well, it would be any business item would have a staff report, clarifying questions from council, public comment, any council deliberation and action. So what it would do is it would take public comment from the beginning of the meetings and it would allow public comment after every action item. Um, your council packet, I did discuss this with staff, um, you know, these are not our procedures. Um, you know, we don't, you know, we will obviously do what council decides. Um, our one issue would be that we would probably be somewhat considerate of, or make adjustments if, um, we start getting into really delayed meetings, we'd probably start needing to limit the amount of agenda items we can get through. Um, but that was the only kind of comment back is that, you know, we just be mindful that it was, it has a potential of extending the length of the meetings.
Mayor Pretend McHenry.
I'm really torn on this one, um, because I know other cities do it. I love the idea, but yeah, that is a concern that, um, you know, similar to when we, um, had all of our council committees outlined, right? And you'd say, okay, finance administration committee, okay, no, we don't have a report. It's just those little micro statements add a little time. Um, one of the reasons I think for me, and I, I don't know for sure that Councilmember Nattland's suggesting we remove public comment at the beginning, but just maybe adding this in. But I think for me, public comment at the beginning of meetings is really important because someone might just want to be there at seven and then leave. Um, and I think sometimes you see that when we have public hearings is people want to speak on it, but really you need to wait till the public hearing and, you know, so we, we get a little taste of that when we have public hearings. I feel like that it can be harder for people um, because we can take twenty, thirty minutes on one thing and you have no idea really exactly at what point in the meeting that's going to come up. Um, so that would be my only concern with this. Um, as long as there's an opportunity to comment in the beginning, I can live with it. I am concerned with how much time it could add, but I always love having a structure like that. It just makes it so clear what the expectation is. So, um, that's why I'm torn on it because I, I love any opportunity you can give the public to speak, but they can always submit a written comment as well. So, um, that's my kind of non-decision on it. Sorry to not be clear, but thank you.
Um, any other councilmembers? Uh, Councilmember Sappel.
I guess I'm okay with the way things exist today. Just on my brief experience here with public comments, public part participation. Um, it's been seemingly done to keep asking after each item, is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Is there any public, and there's no one here to reply.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Nattland.
Yeah, you know, I'm honestly a little bit torn on this too. I wanted to throw it out for an eye, a discussion. Um, I have seen some other cities do this and watch their meetings and it's kind of interesting because if you do it in this order, the, the public is able to see the presentation, hear the questions, and then they might have some, they might have some comment. I, I'm sad that it feels like we never have any public that engages or attends meetings. It's, it's pretty rare and it makes me a little bit sad. Um, so is this an idea that we could try to try to get some engagement? Um, the meetings that I saw that had this, it, it didn't seem like it was creating like comments, comments, comments constantly and, and delaying significantly. Um, I don't know. I just wanted to throw it out. I do feel like we don't get a lot of, um, public interaction. I definitely would not want to take away comments from the beginning because that's where you can just give general comments. You might be wanting to provide public comment on something that's not even on the agenda so that we would never want to take that away. Um, I just thought it was interesting, the structure of, you know, allowing the presentation, council can ask questions. And then you would have, um, an opportunity at the end, once you heard if the public had any input, um, you could discuss it. Um, I don't know. Like I said, I was a little bit torn. I don't know if it's something that we could try on a case by case basis, or I guess that's what a public hearing might be for, if we decided to offer a public hearing on something that we would, that would be somewhat case by case, we could choose to do that. So, anyway.
Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, and, and that's sort of where, where I come down a little bit is, is for the venues where we have more complex issues or the things that we tend to get public interest in through the hearing process, there is sort of a mechanism for that. I think it's not always, you know, clear when we can be responsive and when it's discussion, and we could probably do a better job in terms of clarifying some of that for the public, but, but for those things that really matter, I think where I had to come down is a little different than, than, than your comment was really if we had the public either A, already at a high level of engagement and, and and or, and we needed to structure it more, or there was feedback that there wasn't enough opportunity to engage and provide feedback, but I think we're operating from the other side and I would hate to make a procedural change on the assumption that that's going to drive more engagement because historically, my experience, that's not what does it. It's actually the, the interest that drives the change versus proactively making a change with the hope that there's going to be this outcome.
Uh, Councilmember Shaper, Liddick.
I guess I understand. I don't have a real sense of how this would actually play out. And I think you, I think, I think to your point, I think you need regular iterative like community engagement to test this out. I don't know that we even have the use case ability right now. You don't really see how it'll go. I think it's worthwhile. You know, it is a singular issue, you know, having a open debate or open forum. I think that's good, but I don't, to me, I don't know if this would do anything other than just rework the way we're already doing things in some sense. So I guess that's another answer, but I don't have a real, I don't have a real opinion either way.
And Councilmember Shaper.
And I'm also on defense. Uh, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I do have a concern that we, you know, I think all of us share that we don't get, uh, enough public participation in our council, council meetings. Uh, I don't believe it's a right additional participation. I, I, I really don't. On the other hand, if it did, or if we have an item where, you know, ten people wanted to comment, then yeah, that would extend the meeting, but uh, it's important for the council to hear, hear that type of thing if there's a bunch of people who are concerned about it. Uh, I would actually, uh, I'd be in favor of trying this. I think the only thing, the only delight's going to lead, lead to is we're going to ask the question if there's any public that have commented and, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time it's not happening. Uh, so yeah, it'll delay the reading a little bit, uh, probably not much. If it does delay the meeting, uh, with public comment, maybe we should do it.
Um, City Administrator McNabb.
Um, so just kind of thinking about in case it doesn't pass tonight and, and amendment to these procedures, there is still always a possibility that if you had ten people and you know, they, we hadn't noticed public comment for an item of new difference, but you knew that they wanted to comment. The opportunity would be to host or to hold a public hearing and notice a public hearing in the next meeting and then invite those people back to, to give public comment at that public hearing. So, um, even if it doesn't pass, there's still a procedure for ensuring that you could have, um, you know, vigorous public debate on an issue.
True. And, um, okay. Yeah, just a second. I would also point out that in fourteen years, um, and as part of the city government, when somebody wants to comment on an item on the agenda, they comment during public comment and there is no public hearing. And sometimes it's very rare, uh, but that conversation can go on for thirty, forty-five minutes or an hour. Um, I would be very concerned about public comment after every routine item, for example, approving contracts to do, already budget approved construction contracts, et cetera. Uh, and I would be very concerned about, um, community members, um, potentially blurring the, the role and responsibility of a community member and a voter versus the elected officials that have been elected by the public to make decisions. Uh, and that having that interactive engagement on every item can really blur that line. Uh, and that would be very, very challenging for the city council to move beyond from. Uh, so as we move into uh, large policy discussions, for example, the comprehensive plan where we're going to have dozens and dozens of public hearings and opportunities for public comment, as we hire a communications manager that starts pushing out more information to our community, um, I think we will have more participation, uh, but I would be, um, nervous of opening up a door that causes it to the point of not allowing council to get its business done. When you have public comment after each thing, if you don't have a time bound limit, you're cutting people off. And then those people get more upset if they don't get to comment about that issue. So there's other things to think about in that process as well. Um, that while well intended, could lead to some very challenging circumstances and ultimately degrade trust in the council as a whole. Uh, Mayor Pretend McHenry.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the more I think about this, the more I think that there's some amount of time, there's some trigger point for starting to go down this road in the future. I don't think now is then. I think, um, you know, if we start having a public comment period that's twenty minutes long every meeting we have, do we want to start reorganizing that? Is it hard as a council to listen to comments on all the different things we're going to discuss that evening, you know? So I think if you, at some point, wouldn't that be wonderful? I mean, start getting that level of public commentary, maybe we want to look at this process and start organizing it so that it's easier for us to, you know, figure the public comments are related to the thing we're about to talk about or that we just talked about. So anyways, I, I don't know that right now is the time. It sounds like maybe it's something we could think about in the future, if the public starts showing up a, um, a lot more in that comment period goes along time.
That sounds like we have consensus from our group, so we can move on to the next one.
Okay, one more thing on this. Um, so this is on, in appendix A, page two, subpar, seven, on discussion limit. So the language reads, a council member should not speak more than once on a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak. Council members are encouraged to discuss items during the decision-making process. There is a proposal to amend this section, um, that says, um, there's three bullet points here. A council member's turn to ask one question close the ability to ask for clarification, provide follow-up or feedback. If a council member asks a question, they should be allowed to state their position if they desire not to be cut off. Possible addition, council members turn to speak. So this is the actual proposal in the third bullet point. Council members' turn to speak includes the opportunity to raise one question, make one comment, and make one follow-up question in response per turn. Was the proposed, um, language. Um, I will share with you just as an aside, um, I took a look at the Roberts Rules training today and, um, it is a little bit of a deviation from Roberts Rules, but it's right whatever.
Um, Councilmember Nattland, have her hand up.
I feel like, uh, uh, City Administrator McNabb cut out for a second while she was talking and I didn't hear her, so I just went to, I didn't quite hear what she said about Roberts.
Oh, I was saying that this is a slight deviation from Roberts Rules. So if you were to pick up a Roberts Rules book, this would look a little different and as council, you get to develop any procedures you want.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the reason I brought this up is I haven't seen something like this where each council member just gets one question necessarily another city policy that it feels pretty tightly restricted. And so I've, you know, since I saw this proposed, I kind of was watching, you know, how other council members may ask questions or this or that. And it seems like I see a lot of, there's a grouping of questions that are related that kind of one leads to the other and it's a natural conversation that might only last, you know, two or three minutes, but it would be very odd to cut someone off at their initial question and not be able to follow that line of trying to get to an understanding. And I, I see that happen among, um, most council members as they kind of go through their turn of asking their questions as there might be kind of a line of trying to understand something that involves more than one specific question. And then the other thing is sometimes you ask a question, contemplate it, and then kind of want to state your position after contemplating it. And you wouldn't want someone to be like, you ask one question like, you know, what color is the couch going to be? That question's answered, boom, turnover. The, you know, five seconds and then you're done. It just seems like an awkward, very tight restriction that seems odd and unusual and not conducive of productive discussions.
Uh, Councilmember Liddick.
Uh, actually, I agree with what you're saying, but I'm curious if that, I'm curious that the actual existing language doesn't, uh, allow for that maybe more. Because the, the existing language says, so I agree with you, the good, but the, uh, the existing language says a council member should not speak more than once, but it doesn't actually qualify or, or say what that speaking is. It doesn't say it's a question, two questions, five questions. It says that don't speak more than once on a particular subject until everyone else has spoke. So really all that's saying to me is I'm the first to ask ten questions for every one question I have. Um, but that would just mean that I would be done with how much I need to say. And then it would go through the entire view of council, or at least the opportunity was there for the entirety of council before I could then maybe readdress the subject matter, which to me is actually a looser, uh, structure than what is proposed, which is council members' turn to speak includes the opportunity to raise one question, make one comment, and make one follow-up question. That, that seems actually more restrictive to me if we're just talking about flexibility per turn. So maybe I'm confused, but.
This is a different version than what I was commenting on. And I, I don't, this isn't what I was commenting on. This is different than the version that council got delivered that I commented on.
Okay.
So I don't know where that is, but I was commenting because it was restricting. You got one question. Um, I'll have to go find that. I'm kind of confused at this point.
Councilmember Nattland, the, the, it's one question per round uh, in the, in the procedure. That's pretty standard operating procedures. Council, Mayor Pretend McHenry.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that it's tricky because looking at, you know, what you had put together, um, some ideas um, versus what, how it's written now, I think at the end of the day, it's going to come down a little bit to the chair, to the count, to the body's interpretation of this and, and also the chairs. So even if you had a more specific list of like a question, a follow-up, the, you know, whatever, it's like kind of checking off boxes and it's a lot to track. A question, a follow-up, the, you know, whatever, it's like kind of checking off boxes and it's a lot to track. I think that. You know, it's listed there right now under number seven is. Pretty simplistic and I think it's just trying to get at the point that. Everyone should be allowed to speak, um, once, you know, but leaving that a little open to interpretation. So, um, I don't know, maybe the chair would be fine with one quick. Follow-up because I always hate to move on. If there was just one more clarification you needed on a specific question. That being said, if we let. Councilmember Levitt get out all his ten questions, by the time he gets to councilmember Supple. He doesn't get to talk because all the questions already got asked. So I think this is just trying to spread it out. I, you know, I don't think a perfect system exists. It's really going to come down to. Everyone in this room, including the chair of that particular meeting. So, um. You know, I like the way it's written. It's not. Super specific, but it's simple and, and I think that it gets the point across, which is to try and do your best, but I think there's exceptions and I think that. When I chair a meeting or the mayor does, there are those times that, you know, you might let someone go a little longer just depending because you want to let that mini-conversation finish.
Um, Councilmember Mercer, Shaffer, and then Supple?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I, I was just, you know, we, we sort of have had this, it's been reworked, but we've kind of operated. Largely with this rule in place already, I think, and, and I rarely found an occasion, you know. Asking Director Lenace to ask a question and then. You know, the quickly follow-up, you know, you ask your question, he gives your response and you quickly say, you know, can you clarify that a little more? I've rarely seen anyone sort of get shut down. I think that the approach is really just to be fair and equitable is, is the intent here and I think. To Mayor Proten's comments, um. You know, unless you're sort of accusing, that's probably not the right word, but you know, um. Monopolizing the floor or something, that's really where that likely would come in play. I think the intent is just to make sure that there's. Fair representation and, and to your broader point like. Give you an opportunity to get a question out before all the questions are asked because we all like to feel engaged and, and have an opportunity to present our opinions. So, I, I'm. I think I'm fine with the way that's. It's written and, and you know, if there was concerns, I think we could bring those. Um, to the mayor, Mayor Pretend, and you know, and Kate, you know, I felt I didn't get my, my, you know, um. Point across or heard and we can sort of adjust or treat the process, but this is obviously a little bit, a little bit of a document.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shaffer?
Uh, yes, similar statement, I think, to what a few folks have already, already said. I would be. Uh, not in favor of making this more specific. Uh, in fact, the, the existing wording specifically says the council member should not speak more than once. Doesn't say you can only ask one question. It says you cannot speak more than once. And again, that's open to the interpretation because. As Ron has said, said, a lot of times you need a little bit of give and take, some quick clarifications or, or, you know, you'll hear me say, well, I, you know, three questions. Uh, I'd like to be able to ask those three questions without, because they relate in one way, uh, or, or another typically, uh. And, uh, I actually be in favor of making it more ambiguous than it even is. Currently in section, I mean, section seven, leave it up to the chair to, uh. You know, to, to cut people off and go, you know, go, uh, you know, go on to the next, next one and come, you know, come back and deal. As opposed to trying to. Make it specific is, you know, as we talked about.
Councilmember Supple?
Yeah. Yeah, we, uh, during my time on the planet, we operated. Pretty much the way this was written in here. And, uh, I never observed any really, any problems with, uh. Um, with people not having the opportunity to express their opinion and thought.
Thank you. It seems like there is consensus to not make the change. Um, so we'll go ahead and move.
Can I? Can I? Say something really quick? This isn't what I was commenting on. There is another section that specifies one question. And I, my comment was inserted by, uh. City Administrator McNabb. And it was inserted, it looks like in a different spot than the spot I was actually commenting on and the suggestion wasn't my suggestion, it was actually, uh. Uh, City Administrator McNabb, I, I. Uh, raised the concern and then she made some suggested language, I believe. So the section that. I had seen that had the one question specific was, um, section nine point five. Under council discussion. So I think that's where, because I, I like the language that we're all looking at. I think it's great. I don't have a problem with it. It's, uh, it's section nine point five. And I.
Apologies if I placed it in the wrong.
Oh, no, it's okay. It's, it's actually not in the appendix. You're in the section, I. A different section. This is on page thirty. Unless it's not the number. So section nine point five. Um.
The first, sorry, um, would it look like the clerk to read this out loud so that you can. Hear it spoken, um. This is quite a heavy section.
I can read this section that. Is the specific question, um. Members should address all remarks of the chair upon recognition by the chair. Council members should confine themselves to the motion under debate. Council members should not be, uh, uh, interrupted while speaking unless it is. To call and refer to order, no member should speak a second, second time on the same motion before the opportunity is being given. Each other member to speak on the same motion. If a council member has more than one question, they should limit themselves to one question per turn so that others have the opportunity to weigh into the discussion. Once each council member has an opportunity to speak on the first question, additional questions may be introduced. And I think probably. I'm sorry, I dropped the comment in the wrong spot. It's somewhat duplicative of the appendix as well, but same as well.
Yeah, I mean, I like the way the appendix was written. It wasn't so specific as you get one question because I thought that just felt a little bit awkward because often there's. Um. It just felt a little awkward the way that was written and that's what I was commenting on.
Councilmember, or Mayor Pretend McHenry?
Yeah, I, you know, when you were saying that, um, I remembered in the back of my head too, a paragraph on like, I know there was somewhere the difference in question, but now re-reading the section. I mean, I'm fine with this as written just because before it mentions questions, it does. Say, you know, the no member should speak a second time on the same motion before everyone's had a chance to speak basically and. And like you already said, the last time I spoke just now is, you know. I like the one question per turn. I think. That leaves a little room for if you have a quick clarification, follow-up. To me, that doesn't qualify as a new question. That's just, uh. Um, you know, oh, when you said this, did you mean that type thing? Um. And so anyways, I like the one question per turn, just to make sure every council member gets the chance to speak.
Right, uh, so council hearing, uh, Councilmember Natalie's rebuttal and changes, is there any change to your thoughts? Not seeing, uh, Councilmember Shaffer?
Well, it sounds like I'm in violation of this quote, why not?
And that's also chairs discretion to provide grace at times and then, you know, that's.
Okay, uh. Yeah, I, 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 you know, I guess, I guess we've been operating with this. I, you know, I've been looking at this. I almost like, you know, strike that, the sentence that says one question. Uh, but, um, I, I guess I haven't felt. You know, in my experience, yes, I've felt, uh, I've been cut off earlier or anything like that.
Councilmember Supple?
Well, if you, if you straighten your question, what do you put in? Two questions, three questions?
Leave it up to the chair, leave it up to the chair.
So, yeah, and I, I think that's the ba- basically what's been going on.
Yeah, I did, absolutely, yeah.
And, and I will specify as, uh, someone who chairs council meetings and has chaired some very contentious meetings. Over the years, um, I have personally been yelled at for following council procedures. And so this clarity of having. One question per turn is really important to meeting management and being able to hold the group to the group agreements and council procedures. Um, so as someone who chairs these meetings, I would ask not to leave it open-ended on this particular thing because. When you do have to, if you have someone asking questions and interrupting. Or speaking over the chair or speaking other council members. You need those procedures to be able to refer back to, to call out. And get the meeting on track. Uh, Councilmember Mercer?
This is more, just a comment and I will talk about this more at the. At the, uh, retreat this weekend, but I think the other part, there was other language in here which we didn't cover that wasn't common, just in terms of. Shifting the conversation through the chair that I can also. Addresses some of the cross talk that we also haven't been. You know, following on a consistent basis and it's hard at the muscle that has to be developed and, 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 and applied, but, but I, I. Would prefer to have the rigor and then allow exceptions rather than sort of operate with a more from the Wild West principle. That's, uh, in my, my thoughts.
Thank you. Move on to the next segment. Um, that's it. And I don't really have a role in my commentary, but I will. This is really exciting that after so much work from Mayor Pretend. Starting in two thousand and eighteen, that you might all have professional training for that.
Yeah, I just, though, is the one that you skipped over to get to the other one and it was on the Gig Harbor thing that we skipped it to, to. Go to the, the one that had to do with the conversation with the attorney. And I also want to say, I, that section about the one question, I believe is a new section, a new statement that was added as part of this process. We're looking at a clean copy. That just absorbed all the changes. So I think that is a change. To restrict it to one question. I'd have to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure that's why I commented on it because I noticed that that was a. Specific change. So, um. So it's not what we've been operating under, I don't believe. This would be new. So the section above that had to do with the, something Gig Harbor had done is that. In other cities, councils are allowed to decide, hey, I want to create an ad hoc. Community commission, like I said, to explore. Economic development and we want to have some council members on it and some community members and we're going to do a little workshop together. That is something that's allowed and it's called out. It was called out really nicely in the Gig Harbor. Policy. I think it's a good tool to engage with the public, council and the public and I. Um. When I, it looks like we can't find that spot.
Um, I dropped, I dropped a comment on page six.
Yeah.
Um. Under two point six, yeah, I was trying to find the right place for the comment. Um, so this is interest in adopting good cover language, which is council may create ad hoc advisory boards such as blue ribbon work groups, task force groups by resolution.
Yeah, so I don't know if anyone's interested in it. I think it's a useful tool that council should be aware that they can do, that we can. Create these little work groups and to try to work together with the community, drive community engagement. Um, anyway. That was the, the last thing that I had suggested.
Mayor Pretend McHenry, can we not do that now under our current or under this. Restrictions, so. Or is it just, um, if I could ask Councilmember Natalie for clarification, I'm just trying to understand, is it just to put it in here so the council. Like new council members who come on know that that's a possibility?
Um. I mean, I just, I just didn't see that category of types of. Groups even mentioned in here, so I was worried that that would be interpreted as. Uh. Not something we do or could do. So if everyone feels comfortable that they know they can do that, then I'm fine leaving it out. I just thought it was interesting that Gig Harbor. Specifically pointed that out.
Well, to finish my comment, if that's okay, I'm good either way, um, you know, if, if it gets added or we're not, I'd be fine with it. Councilmember Shaffer?
Or, or. Is the wording in here that they partner has?
Yeah, so the language that begins with council may create ad hoc advisory boards. Such as blue ribbon work groups and task force by resolution. That's, uh, the language of Councilmember Natalie. Uh. Suggested is from Gig Harbor.
What words is that?
It's on page six. Um, I put a comment in under two point six.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm. So.
Councilmember Supple?
So the section two six is titled appointments to advisory bodies, boards and commissioners. I'm not sure. This, the, the suggestion is the council may also create, is there another section in here that? Which might. Be more appropriate than.
Um. Would it under committees? Um, you know, like.
There'd be council roles and responsibilities potentially. Uh, but one thing I want to ask, uh, before council gets into further discussion is that if this is considered. That there's a provision in there subject to available staff time. Uh, because these blue ribbon advisories and ad hoc committees take a significant amount of staff time. And often when you're looking at policy, it's not appropriate for the council member to be the one staffing it. Uh, you need to have a neutral party. Uh, or else it's, um, it doesn't appear good, um. If you're working with a group of community members, um, and trying to drive policy one direction or another, uh, it really should be staffed by a neutral party like staff. Like all of our bench committees are.
Um, so I would say that. Under established policy. Subpart E. Um, role of council members, there is a section that says approved resolution, um. Provide public leadership relationships with constituents. Official elections, can hit the vision goal. I, I would say to some degree, the role of council members and these kind of four high level, um. Um. Commitments to what council members are meant to do, probably incorporates at some degree that, but not with the specificity that it covered us.
Councilmember Mercer?
Well, I was only going to say, you know, the, the mayor can also, you know, create these and, and there's not language for that either. So there's certain, there's been. Similar to the initial when we were defining roles, there's, it's not an exhaustive list and I think. Through, uh. Councilmember Natalie's, you know, comments, I think that, that the general is if, if there's an understanding amongst. Uh, the council that they can do that, there's nothing in here that says we. Can't do it. So that's where I, you know, be more concerned if it was prohibited and then we were clarifying the language, but since it's not explicitly. Prohibited and it is, um, you know, a function of both the council and the mayor, that I'm probably okay with.
Anyone in favor of inserting the language? Not seeing any support for that. So it looks like we have, um. Plenty of feedback to come back with some minor. Minor adjustments, um, before final approval. Uh, so the two, oh, uh, so you're.
Sure, am I good to present on this in a couple of days?
I, I think you probably want to take a motion so I can offer the amendments that I took notes on. That we agreed to make and you could.
If you guys want to pass it tonight, then, yes.
Like when I was congratulating, I was kind of hoping that that would be the outcome.
Sure, the folks that are ready to pass that thing, so on to, so we have these discussions, folks don't want to, so.
Uh, so I took notes to add, um. Uh, language to subpart C, council member role, um. Relationship with and membership on citizen advisory bodies to be a little more clarifying. In three point two, adding that, um. Staff will, um. Include a response to council members and when they respond to constituents. And I think that is, it's. Um, if someone would like to make a motion, um. Would be amendment, so, so you administer here McNabb just stated. Councilmember Shaffer?
All right. So. Uh, is, is there, is there an agenda bill I should be calling?
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, actually. There wasn't one.
Yeah, there's none.
Okay, I think so.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Uh, and now we'll move on to new business and the civilian trespass policy that was under consent was pulled up for discussion. Uh, City Administrator McNabb.
Uh, so I can share that I had a, um, conversation with Councilmember Natalie earlier this week on, um. Uh, a change that is requested. uh, a change that is requested and it's not a budget note, but kind of the equivalent of a budget note. Um, or guidance to city staff relative to, um, the civility and trespass policy. Um, so if we can pull them up and then I would, um, turn, turn the conversation over to council member Napoli.
Sorry, I just realized you called on me. So, um.
Can you hold on please until the clerk brings up the document?
Great. She hasn't, I know.
Okay, let's see. Um, can we scroll down? Go in. So there's an introduction section, so stop right there. There's a, thank you so much. There's an introduction section that kind of talks about the goals of the policy that, you know, we want to have a workplace that's respectful, things like that. But then it gets down to the rules. This is what we are going to enforce based on. This is what's going to define what's allowed and not allowed. And it will, you know, kind of initiate the rest of the process. You break this section, we're going to start enforcing. And so my one concern here, and I had heard concerns from other council members is, um, you know, some of these are kind of up for interpretation and so the the clearer we can make this, the better, I think. And so my suggestion and request was, could we just take out item one, section A, item one? Because I think, um, so I'll read what it says. All interactions between city staff, city elected officials and members of the public shall be conducted in a respectful manner. And I think respectful can really be up for interpretation because the definition of respect would be to hold someone in esteem to look, you know, kind of look up to that person. And I don't know that we can have that as a threshold of an expectation that members that interact with city staff has to hold. They always have to feel like they're being held in esteem by the public that interacts with them. I I think that's a threshold that might be a little bit, um, uh, difficult. Um, so I was going to ask that we remove that line and when I, when I spoke with, um, city administrator McNabb, she didn't seem to have a concern about that because really items two and three really outline what kind of behaviors need to not happen that by enforcing those, you would end up with, uh, generally, you know, respectful interactions, hopefully. Um. And then the other one that I I hadn't mentioned to her is I, I had a conversation with, um, someone else in the community who was pretty concerned about this policy, hadn't seen it until it showed up in the packet and had some questions about it. And I had thought, I thought more about it, about how difficult it could be to enforce some of these things and that potentially we weren't really careful, um, you know, it could create antagonizing people by, you know, constantly calling them out if they weren't perfectly respectful or whatever. Um, so item three, item A, insulting, demeaning, intimidating and offensive communications. On the surface level, that seems totally reasonable. But people take offense and feel insulted all the time by things that may or may not be, you know, legally allowable speech. And I don't know that the city, um, it makes me nervous that the city would put themselves into a position that they expect to never feel insulted and never want to be offended by the public. I think that might be a bar that's a little bit, um, hard to enforce and could get us into potential legal issues. Um. So I, those are the two sections. Specifically, I'm hoping for section A to be removed and possibly item A under section three. But that one, I'm still, I'm a little bit on the fence. I'm curious how everyone else feels about it.
City administrator McNabb.
So, um, when I spoke to council member Napoli, she, um, yeah, certainly characterized my reaction to the, uh, request to, uh, eliminate section one um, accurately and that the preamble to the policy talks about respectful behavior um, in the city buildings. And so to some degree, I think it's a little redundant and, um, agree that, you know, for some folks, it could be a little bit, um, vague. With regard to three A, the preamble for three is actually members of the public will refrain from any behavior that disrupts or threatens to disrupt city government operations or is unreasonably disruptive by doing those things. So it's already qualified on disrupting city business or unreasonably disruptive to others. So it's not any insulting language, any intimidating language or any offensive communications. It's if that rises to the level of disrupting government business or is unreasonably disruptive to others. So there's a qualification to it on the right. It's not just simple insulting dialogue. It's insulting to the point where city workers cannot do their job.
Love it, and councilmember love it, and mayor for Tim McHenry.
I would just second that, exactly what you said, and that really clearly to me, the word disruptive would go on importance right there, so I actually would not be on board with this change to the three A, because it does make sense. Um, either or on one, A one. But if you change the word from respectful to lawful, does that like immediately make it like, you can't do that? Because it's like, oh, that's a question, but I don't know the rules, but you know what I mean? It's maybe they need to try it, I guess, if if it's a problem. I don't really have a problem with it though.
Um, mayor for Tim McHenry, so, you know, I I think everything is open to interpretation, you know, and and I really am looking to our city administrator and her experience um, in previous jobs where they've had to implement something similar to this to guide us. And are we going to have to recheck in and see how this is working? Yeah, definitely. Um, but I know you have to walk a fine line between like freedom of speech and a safe work environment for employees. So, you know, one thought I had, I first off, I'm fine with it as written, just to put that really plainly. But one potential idea is, you know, number one, what if that wasn't a number one? What if that was just written underneath, like, so it wasn't kind of sticking out like a rule? It's just prefacing all of it by saying, you know, we're expecting these to be, you know, people to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. And then the rule number one is threats, including, you know, that kind of thing. Um, so I I think it's like, people are absolutely entitled to be frustrated and angry and then, uh, or, you know, feel how they're feeling. But to me, it's not okay for somebody, for example, to come into city hall like every day or multiple times a week and continue to like act in an insulting or demeaning way. And and I think that there is a criminal level, um, that we're not talking about here. This is more that gray area in between. This is really uncomfortable and this is impacting our staff's ability to, um, serve all the other residents in our community as well. So I just wanted to say that I'm good with how it's written. But if we were looking for a way to make it less, um, to still have the word there, because I think that first sentence, that number one is important. Um, that was just one idea I had to address that. Councilmember.
Yeah, I I sort of had a similar, I I think there's, you could remove it and you have redundancy. I do think though, and I was, I appreciate from a slightly different perspective rather than removing the one like, you know, it's the rules of civility and conducted in a civil manner. I mean, just use the word civil, which means respectful. I mean, not in terms of respectful, but sort of flagging, you can be angry and frustrated and still be polite. And I think that's where, for me, it was sort of framing it. It was, it was how you express that anger, how you express that frustration. There are acceptable ways and unacceptable ways. And I, I have no problem with that additional reinforcing from a framing perspective. I mean, I I guess you could nitpick respectful in terms of deference and if you're dictionary definition, but it was for me, it's more like how you conduct that frustration. And in that respect, I'm, you know, I'd be okay with words from a fiction because I still think the paragraph has value. Whether we remove the number or whether we, you know, use a synonym that that is more, um, targeted at what we want.
Councilmember Shaker.
Um, I, you know, in in general, legal documents, I've looked at, uh, and I suspect they could, you know, reinforce this, but it's full of that big language. And the language is up to, uh, you know, highly up to interpretation of, of, you know, different, different individuals. You can't avoid that. You have to have something, uh, in that. I actually like the language as is, uh, you know, conducting a respectful man. I, I, yeah, I, you know, I I like that. Now, somebody could interpret that differently. You know, somebody's angry but still respectful, they can say that's not respectful. Well, you know, I don't know how you get around that. Uh, but, uh, I I like the language as is, uh, including item one and including item three A.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I I I like the way it's written. I don't have any objection to that and I will probably always kind of, um, tend to side with the safety of the city employees over the concerns or objective the person coming in to, you know, want to do whatever.
Thank you. Um, I would like to share a little bit of personal, uh, experience with this. Uh, besides people coming in our office and throwing things at our staff or yelling at them from the sidewalk and other things that have occurred. Uh, I've had multiple personal, um, interactions that have been troubling to say the least. I have received threats, not threats of violence, but I have received threats uh, followed by multiple text messages to the point that the police chief was worried enough that my house was surveilled and driven by multiple times over a weekend. We have staff that live in this town. If you look at what's going on nationally, we have local elected officials being murdered in their workplaces as as well as government staff. And at this point, we have nothing to stop that process. We have no stopgap except for a tragedy. And so I really feel strongly that this language needs to exist as is so that anyone reading this is clear that treating people poorly is not going to be accepted. And you cannot yell at our staff. You cannot threaten them in any form, whether it's threatening them to blast their names over the internet or publish a illegally recorded phone call. Um, because that has happened, uh, those threats have been made, uh, that this is really important. And we have, as elected officials and as government staff, there are far fewer safeguards, uh, for your personal protection than there are as a private citizen. The moment you become a government employee, you lose privacy. The moment you become a elected official, you lose privacy and the protections of a private citizen. And it's really important with what we're seeing moving forward to have a process in place, especially in a small town and a small police department. Um, and our demographics frankly, uh, to make sure that there are tools to manage this before somebody gets to a point of creating a disaster. Uh, it does happen, it happens every day, uh, in every different type of work environment. Uh, it's really important to the health and safety of our staff as well to have this policy in place. So, um, I just wanted to share that personal story. It sounds like folks are not really interested in changing the language. Uh, but I wanted, uh, folks to hear that as well because that is a danger that we all have being elected officials and government employees. And it's a real issue. It's not. It's not a dream, it happens frequently. So. I think we have all the comments. Uh, so thank you for allowing that personal comment, uh, and that praise. Uh, councilmember Napoli.
This will be quick. The second part of my request is that, and it's really a request that I have whenever we implement a policy. And so just to, um, have that applied to this is after a a year or whatever time council might choose. I I think a year seems reasonable if we could have some kind of review of the policy brought to council of how often is it being used? Are there any modifications we might, you know, tweaks that need to be, need to happen? I just think it's a good practice whenever a new policy is implemented to have a review, some kind of evaluation of how it's working. So I don't know if there's potentially a log that's being kept. You know, anytime this is being implemented so that at that time we get the review, we could understand how often is it being used? What types of issues have come up? Um, I find that very helpful when policies are implemented. And would like to request that happens here.
Create the law. Uh, yeah, I think that's totally reasonable and should be part of just good business practice is to evaluate anytime you do new work. Um, as we talked about when we first put this report council and then even prior to that with our public safety committee, this is not anticipated to apply to very many people. To raise to the level of needing to get a warning or a cease or end this or an administrative trespass from the chief of police. There's just not that many people in the city of Duval who this will apply to, but right now we have none. We have no way to say that's not okay.
And I might add, I think the reality is if somebody rises to the level of the city having a deep and horny this policy, that it's something that all staff is going to have to be aware as well as the elected officials, um, in the city to be aware of that person and be able to um, recognize when a violation of their sanctions has occurred in order to move forward with the legal process. So, um, I think the the reality is, is that if it's enforced, you're going to know about it uh, because it's about safety. Um, and so it would be, um, not good of the city to not share. Uh, so policy review or not, my suspicion is that when this is implemented, you will know of every single person that this is implemented on so that you can protect your city as well.
Right, and so I I guess I would say maybe not the the kind of first oral warning in giving out the policy. I mean, I I will log that. I don't know that I'm going to send a blast council to council distribution every time that happens. But again, I anticipate this happening very, very rare and honestly, we 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 know the folks that probably need a little bit of correction in how they um, treat our staff and probably, you know, we know the person that drives around unsafely and stops our people work staff to the point where we can't see their, um, license plate for two and a half hours. We know those people.
Um, council like to take a motion on this this evening.
Yes. This is a agenda.
Uh, just a motion.
Oh, some.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you, council. This is going to be very, this is very important to staff. Um, I appreciate the deliberation on this one in particular, uh, as we now have a tool. Uh, we've been desperate for a tool for quite a while, uh, so thank you for that. And with that, unless there are objections, we are adjourned. I'm like, why are you handing me that? No, I know, I know a lot of spendables.